Good evening. I now call the Winton Woods Board of Education meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, September 28th. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pennecoff, do we need a motion to appoint Mrs. O'Connor?
Madam Chair, I think you can do that, but the chair's authority.
Okay. Ms. O'Connor, thank you for joining us this evening.
Sure.
I appoint you our Treasurer Pro Temp in Mr. Seymour's absence tonight. Would you please do the roll?
Sure. Mrs. Burns?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Pennecoff?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present. Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Uh huh.
And thank you for being our Treasurer of Record tonight.
Thank you.
Before we go into our public comments, item 2.0 on our agenda, I have a few remarks I would like to recite. Welcome to tonight's regular board meeting. I will explain the sequence of tonight's meeting, which will proceed in accordance with board policy and state law. Following the conclusion of the regular business on our agenda, we will move forward into the selection and seating of a new board member to fill the vacancy created when Mr. Tim Cleary ceased to reside in the Winton Woods District. As a result, this meeting may be extra long. Before we move to our agenda items, I would like to provide a background regarding the vacancy, as I know many of you have questions. At a special meeting of the board, held on Thursday, September 17th, 2015, Board Member Mr. Tim Cleary informed the board that he had moved from the district as of September 8th. Mr. Cleary's move from the district on September 8th created an immediate vacancy of his position on the board. That announcement was expeditiously recorded in the minutes and acted upon. Those minutes are a matter of public record and can be viewed by anyone who requests them and are also available on our district website, once uploaded and approved on our agenda this evening. I will explain the process for filling a vacancy and will refer occasionally to the state laws and existing board policies that guide us in this process. As you may know, board members must be qualified electors residing in the district according to state statutes, and I quote from Baker's Handbook of School Law, "Vacancies on the Board of Education are filled by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board at the next regular or special meeting, but not earlier than ten days after any such vacancy occurs. Like elected members, persons appointed must be qualified electors residing in the district or become so qualified within ten days after their appointment. It is not within the general discretion of the Board to determine when a vacancy has occurred, as the term vacancy is specifically defined in the statute. Under the statute, a vacancy occurs in the case of death, non-residence, resignation, removal from office, failure to qualify within ten days after the organization of the Board or appointment of election, removal from the district, or absent from meetings of the Board for a period of ninety days," end quote. As I stated, the timeframe for a board to fill a vacancy, however caused, is at the next regular or special meeting to occur after ten days, but less than thirty days after the vacancy arises. Because the announcement was received on September 17 regarding a non-residence situation, which began September 8th, the board was at that point already nine days into the time allowable to seat a replacement member. Net, the board had only twenty-one days left in which to take action. In order to stay compliant with the timeframe required by law, we were unfortunately unable to engage in a more thorough application process. Tonight is the first regular meeting that falls within the after-ten-days and under-thirty-days law set by the state, and thus, we must both review applicants and appoint a new member to replace Mr. Cleary this evening. It is important to note that, other than timing and qualifications, state law is totally silent on what process a board should use to pick its new member. We know that procedures have varied widely with boards around the state. As long as action is taken in the time specified and the vote needed is a majority of the remaining members, we are complying strictly with the statutes. So far, I've talked only about state law. Is there any local direction? The Winton Woods Board, in April 2001, adopted a policy regarding appointment of board members during a vacancy. Winton Woods Board Policy 0145 regarding a vacancy is summarized as follows. Number one, the board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through the news media, word of mouth, and contacts with appropriate organizations. Number two, all applicants are to submit a notice of their interest and qualifications in writing. Number three, the board may interview interested candidates to ascertain their qualifications. And number four, the policy states that the board has the discretion as to whether candidates be interviewed. So, in conclusion, our own policy is more prescriptive than that of the state requirements, and we have chosen to follow both state laws and our very own board policy accordingly. An announcement regarding filling the vacancy was quickly prepared and sent to all the standard press contacts. We were disappointed, however, at the level of coverage afforded our press releases, but we were encouraged to seek confirmations that the announcement had been received as early as Sunday, the 20th of September, and submissions for the vacant seat were received as soon as Monday, the 21st. Follow-up press releases were sent to standard press contacts and school and civic forums. We also posted an announcement, or two, on the homepage of our district website. We received nine written applications in total. At this time, I would like to extend a note of thanks for all of those that stepped up and applied for the position, and I am encouraged that so many candidates are willing to support our schools and our children. In order to give all of our applicants an equal opportunity, I propose that we will interview all applicants tonight. Are there any objections from my fellow board members? Finally, before I get into the details of this evening's selection process, I would like to mention that the appointee for Mr. Cleary's vacant seat will serve until the natural term of that seat, which expires in December of 2017. The appointee will therefore be required to serve until December 31st, 2017. I would also note that several of the applicants for the vacant seat are also currently on the ballot for this upcoming election in November for two separate board positions. Should any individual be appointed to the vacant seat this evening and subsequently elected to serve in a separate seat, it is our understanding that another vacancy will be created on the board. For tonight, the order of interviewing will be determined by drawing a bingo token from the bag that Mrs. Denny is so nicely holding for us. The tokens are numbered B1 through B9. We will ask all of the applicants, except B1, to wait in an adjoining room until your number is called. We especially ask, for the sake of fairness to everyone that has applied, that the applicants and any sponsors or fans in this room to have no communication with each other once the interviews start. We ask you not to leave this room, or the waiting room in the back, once interviews begin as well. We ask that cell phones be turned off, and that cell phones of the applicants be placed on the table diagonally behind our superintendent. And if you need to take a comfort break, you'll have plenty of time to do so before the interviews begin at the end of our agenda. Applicants, you will be encouraged to be brief in your comments and your answers. In most cases, we will ask you for your response to be one minute or less, if possible. Applicants, we also ask that you stay in this room after your interview until all interviews are completed. Applicants, the four of us have not decided privately who to appoint, nor have we even talked about the candidates amongst ourselves to preserve fairness. Further, all the interviews will be conducted in public during public session rather than executive session. This choice of a public process reflects our commitment to transparency and support of the district's right to know about their potential board members. Members of the audience, we request that you not applaud and make noticeable reactions during the interviews. After all the interviews have concluded, the board may enter into executive session for deliberations. I can't predict how long this will take, so I humbly ask for your patience and your flexibility, as we do not take this decision lightly. It is our shared burden, the four of us, to determine who will be the best fit to ensure our children reach their highest potential. After our deliberations, we will return to this room and resume the public portions of the meeting. A roll call will be done, then any board member may make a motion to appoint an applicant. The motion needs a second to proceed. At that point, board members may or may not make statements in support or opposition to the motion. When ready, a vote by roll call will be done by the Treasurer. The motion needs a majority to pass, or in this case, three votes. Upon someone receiving a majority vote, the successful applicant will be administered the oath of office and invited to sit at the table as a full voting member of the Board of Education for the Winton Woods City School District. Any questions from the nine applicants? Seeing none, applicants, please see your way over to Mrs. Denny, who will be so politely, kindly standing at that table, and you can go ahead and draw your numbers so we can After you've drawn your token, if you would please come to the microphone and tell me which number you have, I would greatly appreciate that.
B9.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's pause for a second. Number seven?
Yes.
Jeff Birdy? Number one?
Natalia Seals.
Natalia Seals. Number two? Was that you, Mr. Willard? Number two?
B2.
Okay. Okay. Proceed, please.
B3, Sandra Moultrie-Morgan.
Thank you.
B4, Ariel Johnson.
Thank you.
B5, Tina Frenzicido.
Thank you.
B8, Katrina Rugless.
Thank you.
B6, Sean Rogers.
Thank you. Was that all nine?
Did you get Paula?
Yes, Paula.
Ms. Coon, were you number nine?
I'm number nine.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get the tokens back?
Now, if you would please give the tokens back to Mrs. Denny. We'll collect those from you. So again, your patience is appreciated while we attend to the business of our regular agenda this evening. Everyone can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you, Mrs. Denny. In recognition of the anticipated extended length of this meeting, we will postpone the district honors, gifts, and recognations. We will now move into item number two, which is public comments. We have two this evening. Mr. Willard, you're up first. As a reminder, public comments is three minutes. Your time will start now, Mr. Willard.
Okay. Strangely enough, I'm not going to say anything about the appointment process tonight. I've already made my comments otherwise. I did get a copy of the amended parent-teacher, teachers' contract, and I reviewed it, and one thing I came across was the student learning objectives for grades five to 10. And apparently, that's going to be a major criteria for evaluation for teachers. And it would appear that the teachers are going to have a major role in developing those criteria. And I have no problem with that. Obviously, teachers should have a place at the table because they're the ones teaching the kids, and they're on the front lines as to what these kids can or cannot do. What concerns me is there any other control from the administration, because I don't want a situation where we have a race to the bottom again, because when you put the learning objectives on a lower level that are easier to obtain, it does not necessarily help the children. So I wonder what control or who in the administration is going to be on that committee to make the final evaluation as to what the student learning objectives will be with the various grades, at least five through 10. Another analogy might be is letting teachers alone, no matter how well-intentioned, to be in charge of the final objectives determined for teaching is something like having the Iranians self-inspect their nuclear weapons. It's just, it's not good. You have to have some other control on it, and I just wondered what the administration or the board is going to do as far as the person representing the board, as far as these, what these standards might be. Additionally, finally, very quickly, we've had fifty-some teachers leave the district in the last year, if I recall correctly. That's what I've been informed. Twenty-three out of minor grades and about twenty-eight from high school. One of the, either way, the figures come out for over fifty. I wonder if exit interviews have been conducted with those teachers? Because while there may be some sour grapes in the exit interviews, there may be some pearls of wisdom there on how we can improve our system. Because if they're leaving, there are many of them, I'm sure, leaving for better jobs, higher-paying jobs, different working conditions, whatever. But if there's some legitimate concerns they had with what we have here, I think they should be looked at by the board, and I think they should be made public, at least a general summary of what the, what the exit interviews indicate. Now, some are obviously going to have sour grapes. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about general concerns they express regarding the system itself and improvements that were made or should have been made and they were disappointed with, because this, quite frankly, would help everybody. It's feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Walther?
Thank you.
I became acquainted with a couple of new teachers that you have on a social level, and you have two Hispanic, Spanish teachers on board at the high school. And my question is, I don't know exactly all the schedules given, but the Hispanic teachers should be teaching the Hispanic students and/or the fourth and fifth levels to get the maximum bang for your bucks, because they would be the ones using the language the whole time to continue the improvement of those upper-class students and also of the Hispanic students. And it came to my attention that one of them, I don't know if both, but one of them has all Spanish one level, and I think that's not using your assets wisely. So I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move into item number 3.0, approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennecoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, back to you, Ms. O'Connor, for the Treasurer's report.
Sure. The first is the bank reconciliation for August, and you can see our general fund revenues were 13.5 million for year-to-date, and the month-to-date was 1.9, which was state foundation and our real estate final settlement. And the function report, total expenditures year-to-date, 7.5 million, and currently, we are $650,000 under our budget, or 1.4 percent. The district had an unencumbered fund balance of approximately 20 million. 18.5 million was the general fund.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Board, are there any questions for Ms. O'Connor? Seeing none, let the financial report for the month of August be submitted for audit, and we'll move on to item number five.
Okay. And the investment report, we had 23.4 million invested, and our earnings this month were 3,480. Any questions?
Is this the one we also submit to audit, or do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So seeing none, let the financial report for the month of August be submitted for audit.
Thank you.
And 6.0, Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President. These reports are individual reports from each school, but I'd like to point out a few of them that the public would be invited to attend. There is a spelling bee October 23rd at the elementary school that begins at 2:00. There is a, actually, there is a benefit basketball game sponsored. The sponsorship would go to the American Cancer Society at 6:00 PM at the IS. And then there's a Student of the Month at 11:30 PM, Winton Woods Middle School. Keep in mind, we're also conducting the PSAT for every 10th and 11th grader, and that's October 14th. And your future is now. College and career readiness will be at the high school on October 21st, and that date is scheduled to be, the time is October 21st, the time, excuse me, says 6:30, and the date is October 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll move right along into 6.02, proposed new and revised policies.
Yes, these are, these are the new and revised policies. These are the first reads by the board, and Policy 2114 is meeting state performance indicators. Policy 5114, students, non-immigrant students and foreign exchange students. Policy 5830 is student fundraising. Policy 8390, operations, animals on district property. Policy 8500, food service. And the final policy for your first read, Madam President and Board, are on wellness.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Board, do you have any questions for Superintendent?
No questions, Madam Chair. Just to comment, from time to time, I'm asked by someone in the community, what you folks are doing. Well, here is a set of one, two, three, four, five, six policies that we will be considering over the next month. So now is the time, not this evening, but now is the time to read them. If you have comments, questions, reactions over the next month, please do so. We all can be contacted by phone or by email. And later on tonight, we will approve a set of six or eight policies that we were given a month ago with the same invitation to weigh in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pennecoff. Superintendent, we'll move right into your recommendations for item number seven.
Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules. Schedule A, resignations and retirements. Schedule B, certificated employment. Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment. And Schedule E, leaves.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel schedules as presented by the Superintendent.
I'll second. It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing?
One comment. Madam Chair, on Schedule B, there is the, we're being asked to hire an additional kindergarten teacher tonight. This is late September, and we have been pleased with the extraordinary turnout from the community for more kindergarten teachers, kindergarten students than we thought. So hence, it's, the item is not just routine tonight, it reflects growth.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Pennecoff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennecoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. 7.02, Mr. Superintendent?
Madam President, I'm going to have the HR Director, Ms. Wilson, come to the mic to give an overview of the proposed rate increase for substitute teachers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The proposal in front of you is to increase the substitute teacher rate of pay from $85 a day to $100 a day. What we did is we surveyed other districts to find out what other districts are currently paying, and it ranged anywhere from $80 to $100, with Princeton being at the highest, high end of it. What we experienced last year was a substitute teacher shortage. We didn't have adequate coverage every day, and so as a result, our teachers stepped up to the plate, and they volunteered to give up planning time in order to cover the absences or that weren't, we weren't able to cover with substitute teachers. That, we, we ended up paying the teachers that volunteered $27 an hour during a six-bell day. So if you do the math, it's roughly $180 a day, which is far less than the $100 that we are now seeking. So we worked with our union and got lots of feedback from WWTA and teachers about how to be more proactive this school year. And one of the things that we are doing is monitoring staff attendance, and then also, we pledge to try to be more aggressive in our recruitment of substitute teachers. So this proposal in front of you is, in our opinion, will help us to recruit people that were, that might be inclined to go to Princeton, where they have new buildings and pay more. So to the extent that we're competing, we're at least paying the same amount, and we're just down the street from many of their schools. And then also, it's, again, it's less than what we were paying last year when teachers had to cover for teachers. Do you have any questions?
So how, how often? You said that you had to use teachers. Is that 80% of the time, 90% of the time, 10% of the time, that you had to use teachers as opposed to having a sub available?
It was almost daily. So at some building last year, especially towards the end of the school year, and we had peak days, as we reviewed the reports, there might be one or two uncovered vacancies where we would have to move staff around and then find coverage within our ranks. And this problem isn't unique to Winton Woods. Just so that you know, other districts are also struggling with finding qualified pools of subs. And in our case, we are especially selective because we believe that a licensed teacher is preferable to a, just a mere substitute teacher, maybe from a, someone that's worked in industry that, that wants to, you know, get a substitute license and teach for extra money. And then also, we prefer to have the classroom teacher present, and that's why we are enhancing our efforts to track staff attendance.
Another question, are we still getting teachers from the consortium? So that's where we pull from?
Yes. And part of the issue last year, it was our first year with the consortium, and so we knew that there would be a bit of an implementation dip the first year. So last year was year one, where instead of hiring our own subs in-house as we had in the past, we had to send them to the consortium and outsource them to be hired by the Hamilton County ESC, who then, we could then select subs from there. So this year, people are more aware of the process. We've communicated better, and also, as we did interviews over the summer with teachers that fresh out of school, that had just graduated, we encourage those that weren't selected but that showed promise to make sure they signed up to substitute teach, so that they could get more experience and possibly come back in the late spring this year to be considered for employment.
So the increased rate would be less than what we pay a teacher?
Absolutely.
Is there any, let's see. Okay. So what do we expect to save with using substitute teachers as opposed to the teachers that we're currently using? What's the impact to the bottom line, I guess?
Right. So at least $87 a day, times however many teachers, you know, we would have needed to use to cover absences. So if you average maybe five, five, five teachers a day per building, times $87, yeah.
In addition to that, Madam Vice President, the teachers are going to be more prepared. Meaning, we're pulling people at the last minute in some cases to cover for a class, and then they're not adequately prepared for their next class. So what we've tried to create is the opportunity for teachers to plan in a group and to plan a lesson more holistically. So if one of them is missing, it creates a challenge for the system.
Any further discussion or questions for Ms. Wilson? Seeing none, Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I move that we approve the increase of the substitute teacher rate from $85 a day to $100 a day, effective with the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennecoff?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 7.03?
Yes. With the rising cost of health care and some of the challenges that go with it, we are, well, I'm recommending that the board consider approving a job description for the position of health specialist as presented. I'd like to read some of the general descriptions and essential duties that this person would perform. The position assists the Treasurer by performing district employee benefit operations and serves as a liaison between the payroll and personnel departments for employee benefits. The essential duties and responsibilities... The essential duties and responsibilities include the following. Assist with the administration of all aspects of the district's employee benefit self-insurance program. Attend all training sessions as the la, the liaison for the district online employee benefit enrollment system. Is responsible for the district's annual benefit enrollment, which includes but is not limited to attending our meeting with insurance administrators relating to open enrollment. Schedules, building and department meetings, updates to employee benefit brochure. Updates all changes and benefits costs, attends our meetings with insurance administrators relating to open enrollment. I'll skip down, uh, Madam President and Board, to read some of these, uh, pieces that are, uh, more demanding. The responsible for administration of all aspects of employees' individual benefits will include maintains employees' benefits records in the USPS post payroll software, which include medical, dental, life insurance, eye insurance, S-125 plan, tax shelter, annuities, and COBRA elections. Includes but not limited to enrolling employees to elections specified, canceling separate employees in a timely manner and filing changes with providers in order to assure the accuracy of the benefit program provided by the district. And the final is posting of requisitions and reconciling invoices from insurance benefit providers. It's a very demanding piece and at this point, we are becoming self-insured. So it's very difficult for us to maintain that regularity. So the recommendation is to approve the job description for the position of benefit specialists.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Superintendent's recommendation regarding job description.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I, I just want to mention that Mr. Smith read two of the responsibilities in the list, it's actually thirteen.
Yes.
Um, so the healthcare, uh, uh, increase has, has caused more work than what the current, um, personnel can accurately and efficiently manage. So that's what's behind requesting the role now as opposed to it being an earlier position.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 7.04.
7.04, the, um, recommendation is to approve, improve, approve the exempted employee's salary schedules as presented.
Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the exempted employee's salary schedule as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam, Madam Chair, just a quick, uh, comment. As I recall from our discussion, our, at our work session, the, uh, go, moving to shelf, self-insured that Mrs. Burns just asked about or mentioned, uh, moving to self-insured is in the process of saving us several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the addition of this entry into the salary schedule is a small fraction of the savings. That's why I'm comfortable supporting this here in a minute.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 7.05.
Yes, the, uh, 7.05 is a proposal for overnight student event at Wynton Woods Middle School. And I'd like to read briefly what this, uh, program, uh, how the aspects will help with the educational, uh, programming of the district. The purpose is to create a positive school culture and it takes on many forms. This event is for students that have had a good start to the school year academically and behaviorally. The overnighter has been held for the last five years. It is an opportunity for students to have fun at school with teachers and others. Additionally, most of our students do not experience the great outdoors. The overnight gets kids out in the nature.
Fantastic. Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I move to approve the proposal for overnight student event as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just to note that, uh, this is a overnight event, but it doesn't cost us any money. So, um, it's an overnight stay that the students will be able to learn, um, some part of aspect of outdoor life and it's not costing us anything, so.
Mr. Smith, one question because you noted that we're getting the kids outdoors. So will they be taking their electronic devices with them?
That's not in my, uh, core.
That's not.
But I'm sure, I'm sure they will. You know, as long as they're not trying to bring, you know, thirty-seven inch screen, flat screen TVs, I think it'll be okay.
All right.
We'll put you in charge of confiscating those and see how it goes.
If you can peel them from their cold, dead hands, I don't think so. I think they're gonna keep those.
Several years ago, when this project first came on the horizon, I first thought it was an out-of-town trip. So I had questions lined up to learn, it's, no, it's in-town, on-the-ground, outdoors. The biggest bummer is if it rains and it's all, all this excitement is in the gym.
Right.
Rather than out, under the trees, so.
Well, let's hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent will now move to 7.06.
Yes, Madam President and Board, 7.06, the proposal for overnight student trip. Wynton Woods High School varsity football team to Rockbridge High School, Columbia, Missouri, October 9th and 10th. And the recommendation is to approve the proposal for the overnight student trip. Uh, keep in mind, one of the things that, um, Mr. Pennekauf and I have been working on diligently is to make sure that we are, um, received in a league very soon. Uh, we have to play so many games away from our original sites and it kills our fan base and it improves, increases our transportation costs. Eventually, we will get ourselves in that league. And I think one of the things that, uh, puts us on the horizon, uh, how we've changed and challenged our athletes to have a higher GPA to even participate. So it tells the community that we are really focused on academics. Athletics tends to just be the second part of the responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board, a motion would be in order.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the overnight student trip, uh, to Rockbridge High School in Columbia, Missouri.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
One question, Mr. Smith. How did we end up with a team in Missouri?
Madam Vice President, they ended up with us. And they were looking for an open competition. Uh, one of the things that, uh, actually challenges us as we look for competition, when they see this, uh, they act like it was yesterday, but when they see the state championship 2009, other people say, "We're already full." But they don't realize it was 2009.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Superintendent, 7.07.
Yes, Madam President and Board, as we all know, the day for young students starts out with a hot, hearty breakfast that I'm sure all the parents in this room make sure that they are provided. But the second part of that responsibility is getting our students to school safely. And so I'd like to read the National School Bus Safety Proclamation. Whereas the Wynton Woods City Schools Board of Education recognizes that it's a critical and important role that bus drivers are entrusted on a daily basis. Whereas the Wynton Woods City School Board of Education commends the dedication of these drivers who provide safe transportation for the students and staff members of our district. And whereas bus drivers demonstrate a positive role model to reinforce the importance of education and support for family schools and community. And whereas the Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education, as a stakeholder in the educational development of these children, expresses its appreciation and support for the drivers and staff of the Wynton Woods Transportation Department. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education proclaims the week of October 21st, 23rd, 2015 to be a week of sincere appreciation for the importance, role of the staff of the Transportation Department of our school district.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the National School Bus Safety Week as presented.
I will second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Smith, as you read the proclamation, I noted we called out October 21st through 23rd, but we are actually calling the week being October 19th through the 23rd.
My error, Madam Vice President, thank you. We don't want to shorten them out of that week.
Absolutely, yeah.
Nineteen to the 23rd.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move into 7.08, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Madam President. To approve the Career Technical Education Resolution and Career Advising Policy as presented. And this is conject, uh, this is connected to House Bill 47, the Education-
Before you continue, 7.08 is the open enrollment policy.
Sorry.
No problem. We have many.
I'm so anxious about that one.
It's hidden down at the bottom of the page.
Yes. The Board of Education shall permit the enrollment of students from any Ohio district in a school or program of this district provided the enrollment is in accordance with laws and regulations of the state concerning inter-district open enrollment. The provisions of this policy and administrative guidelines established to implement this policy, all open enrollment guidelines must be met before approval is granted. We've modified the open enrollment policy some because, uh, having conversations with the high school and some, uh, and the administrators at the middle school, we were having a, um, a lot of energy associated with open enrolled students based on behavior and attendance. So we have modified it in a way where, uh, we're not, we are accepting students under certain conditions, but it has to be something where the, the behavior is not chronic and the attendance is not, um, egregious. Uh, one of the things that we realized by having open enrolled students, uh, doing the conversation and the interview process, we're not interviewing students about their entering school. We're finding out if they have interest to really come to Wynton Woods. One of the fi, one of the factors that we found out was parents are making a lot of, uh, arrangements or a lot of, having a lot of conversations, "I will get my son there." But unfortunately, the transportation becomes a challenge. And what seemed to be a good plan in the beginning becomes a challenge where students are missing many, many days of instructional strategies that will help move them to the level of being a 21st century learner. So the, excuse me, the policy had to be modified in order to, uh, make sure that we were able to educate children the way that we believe that we should.
Motion would be in order, Board.
Ma'am, go ahead.
You want me to make it?
Go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the open enrollment policy for 2015, 2016 as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Smith, just one point. You mentioned the, um, possibility of issues with respect to behavior and truancy and the like. Can you speak to, um, the, um, possibilities of pass-through opportunities and what that, that truly speaks to?
Yes, Madam Vice President. Pass-through opportunities, the, um, my legal counsel, my legal representative, Mrs. Wilson, and also the EMIS coordinator, uh, came across several, um, surprising issues where students really did not want to attend Wynton Woods. They were using Wynton Woods as a pass-through to get to another opportunity. We are a Hamilton County, um, Scarlet distributor and, uh, they really did not want to come to us. They wanted another opportunity, but their opportunity was associated with Butler County. And they could have gone through that same path. However, we believe that in order for you to, uh, use us that way, I think it's, it's absolutely disrespectful to the educational system that our opportunities that we're trying to provide for all students. And second, you've not tried us before you've attempted to do something that seems quite to be manipulative.
So in essence, this is to add some additional protections for our district?
Yes.
Since there's some unforeseen consequences to being an open enrolled district?
Absolutely. The other part of that, if we had a student who wanted to go into, um, and this is a student who's been with us for a while. Let's say they start out as a ninth grader, they're in 10th grade, and they wanted to go into a culinary arts program and the OAKs says, "We have one slot." And the student has been working very hard with their parents and the counseling department, saying, "I want this opportunity because that's the field of study that I would like to be in." We would absolutely be, uh, putting the chi, the child in, in harm's way, in my opinion, by giving it to a s, a person who has not even attended our district, taking away an opportunity for a child who's been working diligently to be part of that program. There are limited slots because the, uh, OAKs program, uh, kind of provides services for many, many districts.
If I could make two observations, Madam Chair. First, just notice how much sooner we have to move or second with no one in this chair. The responsibility to say something comes up much, uh, much faster. Um, the, the topic of open enrollment, um, I, I know continues to be a, uh, topic of misunderstanding, uh, in the community. And, uh, just like to touch on it, uh, ever so briefly. In 2011, the Board adopted a major different, major new, major different policy regarding open enrollment. And in that open enrollment, we have far more control over who comes in from outside, from any place in Ohio, for that matter, uh, than we have students who physically live in the district. So anyone who moves to the district and physically lives here, we're obligated to take and, and pleased to take. We found it useful to fill those empty seats. You know, if a class has, uh, twenty-five chairs and only twenty-three kids, twenty-three students, we can take two more students in that example without increasing costs, without having to add another teacher, without having to put on, uh, an, another, another class. So the whole policy is built around more full use of the buildings, the staff, the, the, all the various facilities that we have. And we fine-tune that policy every year to indicate just exactly how much room we have before we go over it and thereby require us by contract to add a, add a, uh, an aide or another teacher or, or spend some money. So open enrollment is more use of existing facility at capped. This is a slightly different interest where students are coming from someplace else and taking, um, uh, a program that's available to them at their own, uh, at their own career tech center, but potentially using a seat that we would want, as in your example. So if you have interest in this, look at the Board's agenda on, on the, on the net. The changes that we are voting on tonight are listed in red. All the other stuff is in, in, in black ink. So it's pretty easy to follow and to see, if you go and say, "What did they do?" Well, we've had the motion, we've been able to read it ahead of time. And so I presume we're ready to vote, at least I am.
One more, one more issue. In addition to that, Mr. Pennekauf and Board, um, it's a safeguard because in many cases, we don't, we don't really know about the student until we press accept.
Yeah, that's what.
We can't get any records. And once you press accept, then you start seeing a litany of, of issues about chronic unruly behavior, attendance issues, where the next district has recommended Wynton Woods, for whatever reason.
The other part of that, Superintendent, if you could explain the process then of saying no, so that people understand that once, because once you click accept, you know, you see this long list of, all this behavior that they've had in the other district. And then what is our process for going back and informing?
There is a, uh, there's a very good point, thank you. There's a scheduled meeting with the, uh, building administrator and the parent, uh, letting them know that, uh, there was a particular part of the agreement that, uh, mom or dad failed to read or chose to check the wrong box. And I don't think they would have done it intentionally, but they ask a very specific question. Have you had this kind of behavior and this kind of attendance? And sometimes that box is probably not checked the right way. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennekauf?
Aye.
And Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 7.09, Career Technical Education Resolution.
I think I did that one first, didn't I? All right. Dr. Holden will give you the, uh, points of reference as it relates to the resolution for career and advising.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm asking for your consideration-
I'm asking for your consideration for two items this evening, and they are related. And the first one, I believe, is the career tech waiver for grades seven and eight. And what you're being asked to do is to approve a one-year waiver, and what it states is that we are not providing career tech education for students in grades seven and eight. That's really only partially true. We do have a technology program at the middle school gateway to technology. However, with this new, the new law, there are some pretty intricate requirements for career tech at grades seven and eight. So, we want to spend the year and make sure that our program is robust. There has to be a clearly defined seven-twelve pathway. We have to meet three pages' worth of career tech program of study assurances. There are licensing, licensure requirements. So, we're not stopping our gateway to technology program. We just want to make sure we can say we meet all of these requirements from ODE. I will say, we are not alone in that. There are many districts that are doing the waiver, because it is, it is a pretty intricate, and comprehensive law regarding career tech education at grades seven and eight. The second piece is the career advising policy. And what that states is that we will provide very specific career advising for students in grades six through twelve, through a variety of ways, one of which is our Naviance program, which right now runs seven through twelve, and then also student success plans. So, as part of our work this year, we're required by law to have a student success plan for students who are identified as at risk of dropping out. For us, just off the top, that would be perhaps most of the students at Project Success. But then, we will also push that out and have a student success plan as we go further for every student in grades six through twelve, but the first step is Project Success students. So, the career advising policy provides detail about what the district's policy will be in terms of that, and the resolution is specifically for seventh and eighth grade career tech. Questions for me?
Does this just give an opportunity for us to build a pathway from, so that if they did it, you know, in the sixth and seventh grade, then it would build a pathway, gives us an opportunity to create a pathway going on into the high school, not that they get it in middle school and then it's, you know, dropped?
That's an excellent question. It does, and actually, it gives us opportunity to take a step back and say, "We've always offered courses through our partner, the Great Oaks. We've always offered courses like that. How do we kind of position them in a pathway, perhaps that we already have in existence here? Or how do we even take some of our strengths here and make that a pathway as it fits in ODE's definition of what defines a career tech pathway? And I will say right now, the Fine Arts is indeed one of those pathways. So, this waiver allows us time to really explore that and take what we currently do and currently do well and kind of flesh that out into a robust pathway."
Okay, thank you.
So, Dr. Holden, is it the intent that the career tech education would resume next year?
Right. We currently have it, so you will find students at grades seven and eight in our gateway to technology program. In the past, that, that would have met this requirement, but I don't want to bore you with details, but it's very complicated. So, Mr. Denny and I spoke at length one day, and we were saying, "We're not, we're not sure we can adequately meet all of these requirements at present time."
So, the requirements have changed?
The requirements indeed have changed.
We're demanding.
Okay.
We, we actually could have put something together, however, that would not have been the appropriate measures to take, looking out that we're providing opportunities for children that we love and we care about. We didn't want to just put something together to check the list to say to the state, "We met the requirements," but it wasn't robust enough to make it adequate. So, we'd like to have additional time to perfect it, and the Board would hear about the plan long before it's being implemented.
And embedded in all of this is a continuous dialogue with your, what the state calls your career tech lead, which no one has defined, but we believe is our partner vocational school. So, the law has really changed kind of in that, in that degree.
I guess what I'm, I'm looking to understand is whether the things that you may implement in response to this House bill, you anticipate being implemented by the next school year as in August, or should we just kind of not look for it until the following school year?
No, ma'am. It, by law, would have to be implemented next school year.
Okay.
Any further questions for Dr. Holden?
A quick question. So, the House Bill forty-seven change moved the requirement from nine through twelve
To seven-twelve. Seven-twelve.
Seven, seven.
Career tech ed is seven-twelve, career advising is six-twelve.
Okay. So, it was a fifty percent increase in the state requirement?
Correct.
And I'm sure you got fifty percent more money, right?
Well, they say there's weighted funding attached, but we'll see.
Just, just another example of our legislators adding more requirement without, probably without a thought. That fifty percent more students being served has some incremental cost.
This will be very good for our children, but we want to make sure that we do it correctly.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Holden.
So, in the matter of seven point zero nine, a motion would be in order, Board?
Madam President, I'd like to motion that we approve the career tech educational resolution and career advising policy as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move into seven point ten. Mr. Superintendent?
This is the final part of my report, Madam President and Board, but these are the proposed new and revised policies for September twenty-eighth. Policy twenty-four twenty-three, School-to-Work Program. Policy zero-one-five-seven, Appointment to Joint Vocational School District Board. Policy sixty-eight zero-zero, System of Accounting. Policy twenty-two seventy-one, College Credit Plus Program. Policy twenty-two eighty, Preschool Program. Thirty-one thirty-one, Professional Staff Reduction and Staff. Fifty-three forty, Student Accidents. Fifty-three fifty, Student Suicide. And finally, fifty-four sixty, Graduation Requirements. To the Board and to the people who are listening and also people in the audience, the reason that I read each one of those policy numbers, in case people want to go and reference to see the entirety of the policy and how it reads and how it affects our school and our district. Thank you.
Forward, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed new and revised policies as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
One question, Mr. Smith. Can you speak to why policy twenty-four twenty-three, the School-to-Work Program, is being deleted?
Because of the career advising. Thank you.
Something has to be moved.
I don't know if everyone heard, heard your explanation, but because of the career advising that we just approved. Thank you. Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into eight point zero, our Board of Education reports. Mr. Penneka, you have the floor for your legislative report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In light of the anticipated length of tonight's meeting, I'd like to defer the legislative report to the October meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. I submitted the report for the Great Oaks at eight point zero-two as well, and I will go ahead and submit that or defer that until next meeting as well on the efforts of time this evening. We will move into nine point zero with Board motions and resolutions. Dr. Johnson, you have the floor to introduce the resolution regarding the Board handbook.
Madam President, Mr. Penneka and I worked together to put together a handbook for new Board members, and everybody's had a chance to look at it, and we have a draft or we have a copy of it. So, I'd like to take this opportunity, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution, but I'd also like to read the resolution. Whereas, it is important for Board members, staff, and community to be familiar with the major laws, protocols, and resources pertaining to school district governance. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the attached handbook for the Wynton Woods City School District, and that staff be directed to publish the handbook in a convenient format to be made readily available to Board members, staff, Board candidates, and to the community at large. And be it therefore resolved that the Board is, in its annual organizational meeting, appoint a member to assure that the handbook is reviewed by the Board at least once every year to ensure it remains a viable and valid resource. Be it further resolved that the staff will, in a timely manner, update the provisions of the handbook whenever changes are made to matters contained in the handbook. We'd like to adopt this as of today, September the twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen.
I'd like to second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, did you want to go first?
Well, you could go first.
Don't fight over it now.
I was disappointed when I first joined the Board to find that there was no training program. There was no, not even a list of topics. And I was accustomed to such at where I work and where some of the people in this room work of having a training outline or some set of topics to start. So, we started a list, the list grew, the list grew each two-year cycle when new people came onto the Board. And so, thanks to Dr. Johnson, we have summarized all this into a mirror fifty-four pages, and this being the first copy. And with permission of the Board, when we approve this here in a few minutes, I'd like to give this to whoever gets selected tonight, because they will be a Board member before the night's over.
The other thing I'd like to just point out, as John and I were working on this and putting it together, coming on as a new Board member, there were so many things, and we just needed to know what, you know, what the important factors were that kind of come to the top. And so, it was great that John worked on it because of his years of experience and that I worked on it, because being a new Board member, knowing what I needed to know, and I think we put together a pretty decent piece of work. It will need to be updated, but I think it's a pretty good piece of information to get started, and we tried to include the Ohio Revised Codes and all those things, but just to keep in mind that it's just a handbook. It's not the law as it relates to, you know, school boards, but it just kind of gives you an outline of what, of what it is we do, because I think it's so much more than what people really think, so, you know. So, I think that it's, you know.
I'd just like to add too that this handbook idea we found at the Capitol Conference.
Absolutely.
So, what a huge benefit going to the Board Capitol Conference, the OSBA Capitol Conference every year, because we get to network and learn and use the same tools that so many Boards across the state are using. So, I would just like to give a huge thank you to Mr. Penneka and Dr. Johnson for your extraordinary work on this committee. Very, very happy that this has finally come to our agenda to vote on this evening.
You too.
So, if there's no further discussion, I'm ready.
I'm just very happy that we filtered through the what was important versus what wasn't immediately important for a new Board member and kind of got through all of the stuff. Thank you.
Sure. In a bit of, a stroke of a bit of luck, we paced the event over the last year to have this ready to go for two of you in November, not knowing that we would need a copy in September. So, we're finishing at the right time.
Okay. Ms. O'Connor?
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, Board, Superintendent, Ms. O'Connor, audience, we will now take a much-needed comfort break for five minutes. Once we return, we will begin the interviewing process for the vacant Board seat.
I will now call the meeting back to order. Okay. Just as a reminder, all of the applicants who we are interviewing tonight, we will give you or ask politely that you please keep your answers to one minute or less for the sake of conserving time. Applicants with numbers B-two through B-nine, please follow Ms. Denny. Please remember, to be fair to all applicants interviewing this evening, we ask that you leave your cell phones on the table by the door. And whomever is left sitting in this room, while these interviews are taking place, are asked to stay for the remainder of interviews as to not disrupt the process. Thank you. So, our first applicant, which would be B-one, please come to the microphone, and please state your name for us.
Natalia Seals.
We'll wait until everyone's out. Thank you. Ms. Smith, could you please get the door?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Okay, one more time for us. Please state your name.
Natalia Seals. Just like Navy SEALs. I'm just wondering how to spell it.
Dr. Johnson?
Okay, Mrs. Seals. In one minute or less, tell us why you want to be on the Wynton Woods City School Board.
So, as I mentioned in my application, I believe public school education is a foundation of the American dream. I am a product of public school education myself, and that's what kind of brought me from small town and a working family in Russia to the United States to pursue my dream. I've been very successful, and I see this as an opportunity to kind of give back to my community and contribute to promoting and supporting the American dream and giving high-quality education to all children and not just the select few. And I think our school district does a great job of that. I have two children in the school district, both attending Primary South, so I get to see firsthand what works well and the challenges and opportunities that we have. So, I think I can bring a unique perspective of a parent and an immigrant who understands the challenges that immigrants, immigrants, children go through in our school district. Personally, very passionate about education. This very much aligns kind of with my calling and my purpose in life. I recently resigned from my very successful ten-year career at P&amp;G to pursue my calling and work for free for a while to run a educational startup company that creates basically a bilingual program that teaches children languages and helps them learn languages significantly faster than they would without the program. So, that's something I've been working on for a while and I'm very passionate about, and I just see the opportunity to be on the Board, just another way for me to give back to our community and be part of creating a better education for children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In one minute or less, could you tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board member?
Well, number one responsibility of a school board member, based on my research, is to ensure that the school district provides the best education possible. So, we're, what I understand, the Board is the kind of the watchdog that ensures that Superintendent, no offense, does his job and, and his team, and that our children are kind of getting the best possible education. In addition to that, the Board leads the initiatives that are important to the school districts and again ensures that whatever the Superintendent's team does aligns with the objectives, educational objectives of the school district. And also, I've read that, you know, there's some financial management improving programs that the, the school district implements, investments in buildings and so forth, managing the budget.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burns?
As one of five Board members, you have no personal authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize spending, to commit to Board, the Board to any action. the staff, to authorize spending, to commit to board, the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions, except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by a majority vote of the board. So tell us, if you would, what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any particular proposal that you would bring.
Great question. So, from what I've said from my research and from my question, there's a lot of kind of leadership by influence and collaboration that happens on the board. And I know a couple of you have worked at P&amp;G and know that a lot of things happen through persuasion at P&amp;G as well. So I think my career at P&amp;G prepared me well for that because even as a brand manager and kind of the leader of the team at P&amp;G, you don't necessarily get to make a lot of decisions without the support of your team and sometimes people who are way above you in terms of ranks. So, I have led many diverse teams at P&amp;G in my previous roles and have learned how to collaborate and understand the other person's point of view and seek to understand first before kind of making a decision or telling someone what to do. So, I, some of, to get to your question, first I would seek to understand and make sure that I, I know kind of where the other person is coming from and different points of view and how people can see the issue. Then I would use the data and the experience to explain my point of view and why that might be, you know, the right decision for the school district.
My turn? In 2011, a committee of people from the community and the school board developed a vision, a long-range vision. And part of that vision was, we're committed to make Wintonwood City School District a district of choice throughout southwest Ohio for families, faculty, staff, students, and businesses. This will be based on a, on state-of-the-art physical facilities. Tell the board what you have done, this roughly translates to the bond issue, tell the board what you have done to support that vision in the two, in the four years since 2011.
To make Wintonwood the district of choice.
What specifically to the vision that the community has of having better buildings, state-of-the-art facilities, what have you done to support that vision in the last four years? As a member of the community, yeah?
I have, so I send my children to the district that in essence supports the district. I have volunteered at the school as a volunteer. I'm a PTA member and I have financially contributed through donations to the school.
Okay. What I was searching for, I didn't find. Okay. What I was searching for, the, the school has been on the ballot for funding issues over five times since you registered to vote. According to the Board of Elections, you haven't voted on any of them. So that gives me pause. Aside from all of your other obvious skills and qualifications, that part worries me. Yeah. If you were appointed, can you attend the three-day training event that will be held on November 11th, 9 through 11th in Columbus?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think that's, back to you.
Any other board members have any questions for Mrs. Seals?
I do.
Is this round two?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know where we were in the game. Okay.
So can you tell me what innate gifts or talents that you have that you would think would be helpful as a member of this board?
I think my leadership and collaboration skills would be helpful on the board, specifically the collaboration skills and being able to bring different people together and help everyone understand the common vision and how to kind of work through disagreements and reach common objectives. And the second one, I think, is my analytical skills and being kind of to take something that's very complex and ambiguous and simplify it, boil it down to a very simple issue definition and then a solution. Thank you.
You mentioned earlier in your, in your talk that you had a business and in your letter of application, you mentioned that, that you lead Little Sponges, an innovative global company that focuses on bilingual education. And you said that you worked to develop and expanding one-of-a-kind, highly-effective video program that teaches children English and world languages to help them reach their full potential and thrive in a globally connected world. So this is a business that you're thinking about doing or that you're doing, you're already doing it. As a board member, you wouldn't be able to implement that business in the Wintonwood City School District. Does that cause a problem for you? It causes a conflict of interest. So would that cause a problem for you, serving as a board member, you can't, you know, do both things? So how would you?
Would you be able to implement it if I gave it to you as a donation? Is that remove the conflict of interest?
It would be something, I guess, that could be considered, but it would, it's a conflict of interest. Yeah. So I don't know, the question is, how would you feel, you know, since this is something that you're very passionate about, do you think that it connects with our district? If so, how? And would you be willing, like, I guess I'm saying, would you be willing to sacrifice that as your passion to join our school board?
So, to be completely transparent, your district has already purchased the program to use it this school year. So, we would have to consult an attorney to figure out what is the right solution if there is a conflict of interest. And just off the top of my head, as one of the solutions I thought of is potentially just giving it to you for free so there's no money exchanged, there is no contract. I'm not in any way benefiting from it. I'm not sure it's even a conflict of interest because the decision has already been made prior to joining the board, but if there is still a conflict, then I think there probably some solutions. But I'm not an attorney, so we'd have to consult somebody who's, you know, more knowledgeable about it than I am.
Sure. Okay.
But I would want the kids to benefit from it, so my kind of top priority would be to make sure that you can stay in the school. And what is the way to do that? How would you be willing to sacrifice the money if that's the solution?
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no further questions from the board members, I have a closing question. Is that okay?
May I make two?
Please.
I'd like to know your opinion of one of two programs the district has, either Project Success or the Academy of Global Studies. Would you give us your opinion? Pick one and give us your opinion of it.
I think Academy of Global Studies is great because the, our kids are competing in a global environment where our 21st century skill is extremely important. The kids that are graduating today are going to be competing not only with kids in Cincinnati or across the United States, but with kids from China, India, Russia, and all over the world. So I think that's a great initiative and I highly support it.
Good. All right. And one final, Madam Chair.
Sure.
A question I'm going to put to all, so don't feel that you're being picked on. Okay. Do you have anything, either in your history or current situation, about which you have not informed this board, but upon being made known would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction to the district?
No.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. What do you like best about the Wintonwood City School District?
What I like best about our school district is the diversity that we have. To be completely honest, I've had a lot of people say things to me like, I can't believe you're going to send your kids to Wintonwood School District, or, you know, why are you not sending them to private school? And we said, you know, we went and had a tour with Ms. Bray before we made our decision to send my daughter here two years ago. And we were very impressed with her as a principal and the teachers that we met. And now my daughter's been in the school district, but it's her third year, and my son had just started kindergarten. And what I've been impressed with is the amount of diversity we have, how many kids we have coming from different backgrounds, from maybe families who don't have the same means as we do, or children, you know, who just moved here and don't speak English. And I've been kind of very consistently impressed with what the teachers and the principal have been able to do with our children. Like, my daughter's very bright and she's being pushed through, you know, to succeed and do more, while there are other kids maybe who are still like, don't even know how to say hello in English because they just landed here. And yet, you know, there's ESL teachers and their general education teachers are helping them do, you know, what they can and kind of get them acquainted with the school and catch up and get kind of the education that they need. And everybody is, you know, getting kind of the customized approach that Mr. Smith talked about in his speech and making sure that, you know, we bring the children who might be struggling above the average and then the kids who are really strong, that they're still getting, you know, pushed and challenged to rise to their full potential. And we're not just, you know, kind of giving everybody the same average approach. So that's, I've been very impressed with the school and their ability to manage the diversity and give every child what they need and support them and still be open and kind of include everyone. So, if I haven't been impressed, I move my kids by now, so.
I have one final question.
Sure.
You are not one of the six who's currently on the ballot to, to sit on the board. So what made you decide to seek this role now?
Honestly, like, the last 10 years has been kind of a crazy roller coaster for me, a whirlwind. I've had, I don't know, six or seven different jobs at P&amp;G. I've been moving up really steadily really fast and I've had three kids during that time period and really, and then about three years ago, I had this idea of creating this program, so I've been working on that kind of on the weekends and nights. And so, I haven't really had time to do more outside of my responsibilities at P&amp;G and the business and my family. And now, since I've recently resigned from P&amp;G just a few months ago, I've been starting to look at ways I can contribute more to the community and do more now that I have a little bit more flexibility and I don't have to have, you know, seven a.m. meetings with China and nine, eight, nine p.m. meetings with my global president. So, I have a little bit more control of my schedule, quite a lot more control of my schedule and more free time to be able to do things like this and be here, you know, at night and know that I can be here because I, I'm running my own company and I have that flexibility.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? We thank you very much for your time and your submission, Mrs. Seals. You can have a seat anywhere in the room. Ms. O'Connor, would you do me a favor and be my go-getter tonight? Number two, please. And just as a reminder to everyone in the room, we ask that you keep your cellphones away as we don't want any communication between those sitting back in the room and those here in the room. We'd appreciate that.
I'm here pursuant to your summons.
If you could, please state your name for us.
My name is Thad Willard, John Thad Willard. I'm a resident of Green Hills and I am a formal candidate for the Board of Education and will remain so regardless of what happens at this point, I would assume. I did indicate some reservations I had regarding tonight in writing and I'll just state for the record, if and if in fact, Mr. Cleary left September 8th, we have no problem. Timing is okay. If in fact, as some records indicate, that he left August 24th, or earlier, July 10th, there's maybe a problem. I'm just saying that.
Okay.
And the second part of that would be, we're reading the statute and it's not a model of clarity. You read the thing, you had to read it two or three times. I did. But it would appear...
Let's get to the interview.
Yeah. It would appear for the record. I think it's important.
We appreciate your legal advice. We're here to interview you.
Well, I, yeah, but I want to make sure that everyone understands...
And just as a reminder, we ask you to keep your comments to one minute or less in the efforts of time and fairness to the other applicants.
I and other people from Green Hills and Forest Park may not be eligible for appointment if you read the statute. That's the second point I made.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Willard. Dr. Johnson, would you please ask the first question?
First question, thank you, Mr. Willard. Is, in a minute or less, tell us why you want to be on this Wintonwood City School Board.
I've lived here for 21 years and when I first came here, there was a minimum problem with the school system. There were some issues, but they worked themselves out. But unfortunately, over a period of time, academically, it deteriorated, particularly in the last 10 years, just watching the way things were going. And I, I think there was probably a radical change in demographics that caused it, or at least part of the problem. Having said that, I don't think the board and the administration kept up with the problem or adjusted in a timely manner. And this concerns me because we are near the bottom in many ratings academically. And this has affected not only the students, the parents, but also the people living in the district. Because I spoke to three people just today that say, gee, we want to move out, but we can't get any money for our house because the school system's rated so low. So everyone had, for what, different reasons. Whether you're a parent, or you're a child, or just a plain taxpayer, has a stake in the outcome and how this school's doing, not just the school, the system. And right now, it's not doing too well. We have high hopes that Mr. Smith here, who's come aboard, this is his second year, is really trying to turn things around. And we hope he's very successful because we all win. But I think there's a long way to go and obviously we, state is not helping us because it's not telling us what the scores are in this timely matter, so we can make adjustments to help our children. So I, I really think that I can make an effort here to get us back on track.
Okay. So, again, in one minute or less, tell us why you want to be on this school board.
I think I indicated that I think I can make a difference as far as stressing the academic performance of the students and insist on academic rigor and also discipline among the student body and perhaps some of the employees. I also think we need to look at the, to the extent that the teachers are being backed up by the administration on discipline matters because if you don't have appropriate classroom discipline, enforceable, you have nothing but chaos in the classroom. And I, I'm concerned that may be a problem in some cases. We also have, seem to have too many fights in the hallway and we've had a recent incident about three weeks ago in Green Hills, in the middle school, where a police officer was injured in a fight in middle school. And that doesn't happen overnight. That behavior had to develop over a period of time. It's very unusual to have a kid that's in school doing nothing at all, no problems, and all of a sudden you have a fight with a police officer. I suspect if someone looked into it, that this was a long time coming. And so, some preventive measures should have been taken before it got out of hand.
Madam Vice President?
As one of five board members, you would have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions, except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board. Tell us what you'll do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring.
You'd have to thoroughly investigate it. And while it's not the position of a board member to micromanage a school, they do have oversight, just the same as a board of directors has oversight over a corporation. You have to be elected board of directors in a, in a sense. And it's your responsibility to over, exercise, do due diligence and oversight as to what the administration and teachers are doing. That's your job. And savory as it may sound, it doesn't mean you micromanage, but it does... And savory as it may sound, it doesn't mean you micromanage, but it does mean that you have to investigate issues that are coming up consistently that involve the school system and how it is functioning. Because that's part of your responsibility, like it or not. And, you know, using excuse, we don't touch the management, that's correct. You don't touch it. But you can oversee it, and that's your responsibility. It's not the job of a board director to point people to boards or to positions in the school system, et cetera. That's the administration's job. But it's certainly within your purview to make recommendations if there seems problems developing.
So since you are a candidate on the ballot for this November and an applicant this evening, did you attend the board candidate workshop facilitated by OSBA earlier this summer?
No.
Mr. Penneka?
I'd like to repeat Mrs. Burns' question with a slightly different twist. She asked you, tell us what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to support, to vote for some idea, whether it's oversight or some policy changes, as I recall. So I want to ask that question a different way. Do you post under the avatar Cicero?
Yeah.
Is the post of Sunday labeled Cicero Regarding the School District? Is that you?
May well have been.
It may well have been. I can read it or give you a copy of that.
Which one is it?
This is the one that was posted Sunday that starts off, the word seems to be out that Jim Cleary, your words, or the words of the other.
That's mine.
From the Board of Edu, resigned from the Board of Education September 8th, but it was apparently only announced September 18, 2015, 10 days after the resignation. Does that sound like your post, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay. In this post, you lambasted the board.
Certainly did.
You certainly did. You accused the board of playing games, deciding privately, going through the motions, pro forma applications, already privately made a decision, and you suspect the board members may be looking for someone that is inexperienced and so forth. And all of these suppositions and charges, then in an amazing leap of logic, you said if all of this is true, then you go on and talk about the sky falling. How can you, after having lambasted and challenged the integrity of these four people, tell us how you would convince us to adopt some proposal of yours, sir?
Simple, facts. I'm assuming all of you are rational people. And if I present facts that would indicate a certain course of action would be appropriate, I assume all or most of you would at least look at it. And as far as the position I took, I made an application about two or three, four years ago. And I'll give you credit this time, at least you're doing it in public. The last time you took applications, you held everything in secret and we found out later who the board's choice was. And assuming, I just assumed the same system was in place, only perhaps a little bit more open. So that's the reason I made that post.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Penneka.
I have a, the school board has a defined code of ethics. And your profession also has a code of ethics as a lawyer.
Assuming they're not incompatible at this point.
Yeah. I need to read and I have a question at the end. I have here in front of me a article from the Supreme Court of the state of Ohio, and you know where I'm headed with this, sir. This says, "An opinion prepared by the Office of Public Information for the general public says that on July 30, 2009, the Supreme Court of Ohio suspended the law license of Hamilton attorney John Thaddeus Willard for one year for professional misconduct."
That's absolutely correct.
Is, and the court went on to say, but this was, that you violated multiple provision of the rules of professional conduct. Is this you, sir?
That's me.
Thank you.
And the primary rule, I didn't...
I understand.
Either to, you admit, I'm allowed to...
I just ask a yes/no question.
Yes, and I'm telling you, it's me, but the primary problem we had was, in fact, I didn't contact the client in a timely manner. And other stuff came up that I was not aware of, but since I was a lawyer, I'm responsible.
I can wait for my next, if you want to.
I also was reinstated within six months.
Do any other board members have questions for Mr. Willard?
Yes, I just have one.
Yeah.
What innate gifts or talents do you possess that you believe would be helpful and useful on this board?
Unfortunately, too much experience with clients who've been involved with the penal system because inadequate education. Quite frankly, the average educational level of the person going to prison is third grade. And we've had some from Wintonwood School System. And I have to represent them for the last 15 years. And they're wasted people there. They should not have been wasted. They were wasted by educational systems that were not adequate. Not all of them from Green Hills, but the same type of attitude that we could see in some of the students to here. Not all of them, most of them are law-abiding, but we've had too many that are falling through the cracks that should not have. And I've seen the results. And there's too much social passing. And as a result, they end up graduating and within two years or three years, end up in prison. And quite frankly, being in prison with Pooja as your roommate is a heck lot more psychologically damaging to a human being. And so perhaps hold them back a year to make sure they get their proper education and actually have a foundation to move on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Johnson?
Mr. Willard, there's a solid match between interests, skills, and preferences of the individual board members that connects them with the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of the Wintonwood City School Board member in connecting the multiple functions associated with the roles such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership?
Primarily observation. See what's going on. People approach me, they ask me questions, ask me to check into things, things of that Basically oversight. That's what the board's responsibility is, both individually and collectively.
So you would answer their questions without consulting your other board members?
Depends what the question was. If it's something I had the immediate answers and the board already discussed, no, I would not discuss it with the other board members. If, it'd be more likely, I would probably discuss it initially with the superintendent because more often than not, if I get a question or anyone else gets a question, it's probably something the superintendent should answer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Willard before I ask the closing question?
Yes.
Mr. Penneka?
I come back to ethics. Another question. As you know, the board had a ballot issue to fund new buildings. It was on the ballot twice and you were very open and skillful in opposing that. You've mentioned you're a resident of Green Hills. I presume your voting location is not at, in Forest Chapel, sorry, Word of Deliverance?
Oh, it's the...
Your voting location is not at Word of Deliverance Church, is it?
No.
Okay. The reason I ask, sir, is that in the afternoon of the voting, as I and three or four others were working the polls, a car that looked just like yours...
It was my car and I was in it.
Oh, you've saved me the setup. The point is, your car was parked, by your admission now, in the handicap spot.
And I am handicapped.
All afternoon, except for a minor comfort break in the middle of the...
I was there for at least two hours, no question.
You were there longer than that.
Well, I left and then I did return.
I know. And it was of such a concern to the people working, they even took a couple of pictures.
The people...
My point, the ethical question I ask you, sir, we have over 500 students with disabilities. Will you similarly block their access to the unusual services they need that you did for the voters all afternoon?
Absolutely not, because I...
Good, thank you.
And I can explain my answer, sir. I have a sister that went through special education and she still, she had brain damage when she was born. She's still alive. So I really sympathize with people that have family or children involved with disabilities. I've lived with it all my life, not me, but with my family. So no, I'm not blocking anybody. And I am, and the tag on my car is my tag and it was issued pursuant to a doctor's certificate.
No, but the driver of that, I didn't say it was you, you've admitted to it. The driver of that car never got out to go vote. The driver of that car...
Absolutely not.
Stayed in the car all afternoon. And I don't get the logic of you have relatives who are disabled, therefore you block the voting capability.
I'm sure you don't, sir, because I was opposing that bond issue and I have a right to oppose it, whatever precinct it's being promoted in. Now, as far as taking photographs, the numerous photographs were taken in Green Hills of the vote no signs by members of the administration. Now, I don't know about the ethical procedure regarding that and whether those people were ever disciplined or what happened. So people in Green Hills and Springfield Township were not happy with people from the administration coming and photographing signs in their yard with their children in the yard. So that was another factor.
That concludes my question.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. Any further questions? Dr. Johnson, Madam Vice President?
No, thank you.
Last question, Mr. Willard. What do you like best about the Wintonwood City School District?
I think, having mentored here for three years, the students are, the bulk of them are very sincere and are capable of doing the job and learning. And it seems like, for the most part, the attitude has been very polite and courteous to adults. And that's a positive. And I think as long as that continues, all is not lost.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You may have a seat anywhere in the room. And Ms. O'Connor, would you please get B3?
Good evening. Please state your name for the board.
Sandra Moultrie Morgan.
Dr. Johnson?
Good evening, Ms., can I say Morgan or Moultrie Morgan?
You can say Morgan, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Morgan. I have your first question and it is, in a minute or less, tell us why you want to be a member of the Wintonwood City School Board?
Well, I want to give back to the community. I have a niece, had a niece who graduated last year, so I actually have been in the system for the last four years. I didn't have any kids in the system before she started going to school and living with me. So I wasn't really active into the community until that happened. And of course, after that happened, then, you know, you get the bug and you start going to everything. She got into plays, I mean, she got into all kinds of things. And so I became really involved in it. I spent a lot of time, you know, just talking to the teachers. She was in one of the STEM cell type. Last summer, they had a, I want to say like a camp or something like that. So she did that. And just the things that she was doing got me really, really interested in. I think it's kind of like if you're not really, you don't have the kids, you know, you read the letters and all that and listen to that and, you know, do your voting and things like that. But once you got a kid in, it kind of gives you a little bit more. I think you get the extra push that you need.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. In one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities for a board member?
I think the ability to listen and reason, have an open mind, just, you know, do the job, make sure that you're there for the right reasons, that you are coming prepared, that it's essential that, it's essential that you, you have that passion for, you know, the kids, this community, the school system, just be an all-around person.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
I'm sorry, can't write that fast. So I'm going to read a question.
Okay.
As one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions, except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by a majority vote of the board? Tell us what you'll do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring?
First of all, I would do my research on that particular issue that's coming before, so that when I'm talking to each one, I would let them understand how I feel about the situation as far as what's going on with the problem, why it's a good thing to vote for if that's the issue or against. And so I would give them all the reasons why it would make sense to vote a particular way. I'm not a person to, I guess, push a person, but maybe let them open their minds to see how the issue is, you know, by what my research or what I've done.
Thank you. Mr. Penneka?
We may have misspoke, or you may have misspoke on the question a second ago. On, the question was, what are the top two or three responsibilities of a school board? And what you gave us was top two or three skills that an individual school board member, good skills that a school board member. Let me ask again. What's the job of the board? What's the top two or three things that the board has to take care of?
The board has to take care of the school district, the children, first of all. That's the top thing, I would think, is having the children's best interests at heart, doing what's right for the community as a whole. And I would say the other one would be credibility.
You mentioned your niece was in the first class of the academy that graduated just a couple of months ago. So what is your evaluation, what is your opinion of AGS?
I liked it simply because I, you know, everything was project-based, so she spent a lot of time doing different types of things like that. And I think it helps the kids get ready for the real world. They had to, most of the things were done as a group, so that was a good thing, simply because you have to work with a group of people all the time, no matter what you're doing. So it gave them that experience, or gave her that experience to do that. Also, the classes weren't that large, so that was the other thing, usually, you know, 15, 20 people. So that was a good thing also. And I thought the students, I mean, the teachers were very caring and I like the concept myself.
Well, as you were aware, most of that program takes place in those old trailers, those 22-year-old temporary trailers that are falling apart. And so I want to ask you about your support. We had a bond issue on the ballot to have more accommodating buildings. And I noticed by the Board of Elections, you didn't vote for that in May. Can you...
This past May?
Yeah.
More than likely, if I, yeah, I think I did miss that particular voting and it had probably to do with me being at work and working late and missing it.
Yeah.
But normally I had to vote.
Yeah, good, I hope so. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you have anything, Ms. Morgan, either in your history or current situation about which you have not informed this board, but upon being made known would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction to the district?
No, nothing. No, nothing.
Dr. Johnson and Madam Vice President?
Yeah, one last question. Um, there should be a solid match between the interest, skills, and the preferences of the individual board members that connects them to the collective stakeholders. How would you fulfill your role as Winton Woods City School Board Member in connection to the multiple functions, uh, associated with the role such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership? So the question is, how would you, as you're in your role as a board, uh, member, connect the multiple associated pieces of the, um, of the organization that we affect?
So are you speaking of, um, of, um, as a, uh, community leader?
As a board member, you kind of are a community leader.
Right.
Right, so I, I mentioned the four, because that's, that's part of our charter, community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, and district leadership. So, you know, as a board member, what, what do you see your role in all of that?
I would see my role as, uh, being a person who, um, is out there in the community, working with, um, you know, say for instance, uh, children or anything, any capacity that I would need to be called upon really. Working in the schools, you know, just being out there if I had to give, um, see if I was called upon to give a speech or something like that to, you know, talk to area kids or, or to the school system, the community themselves as a whole. Um, just being out there and being, um, you know, being focused on what's going on.
All right, thank you.
So I have a question. Your name's not on the ballot for November, correct?
My name's not on the ballot for this.
For this coming November to, to fulfill one of the upcoming two?
No, it's not.
So why did you become interested in fulfilling this seat now?
Well, I actually had been thinking about, um, you know, doing something, and actually was for the city council, had been thinking about that for a while. And then I heard about this being, uh, coming up and I decided it would be a great opportunity for me, something to get involved more into the community. And, uh, I just thought it'd be a, a good idea to do something. You know, become more, more focused and just, just do something.
And finally for me, what, what are your innate gifts or talents that you bring to the table that you think would be helpful or useful on this board?
I would say for me, it would be, um, leadership qualities. Um, I have a stick-to-it-ist type, uh, personality. I believe in not stopping until the job gets done. I love working with people. I know people, you hear people say it all the time, but I actually do. And, uh, every, my jobs have had, just on my resume, has always been in serving others, so I think that would be it.
Thank you.
I think this is my final, uh, comment or question to it. You, you made a comment, uh, response to another question about, uh, looking to give back, uh, a chance to do something. I will try to remember to say this when all nine candidates are in the room, eight of whom don't get picked tonight. I would hope for those eight, it, it starts a new chapter, an additional chapter of engagement, contribution, because the people who have put theirs, taken the risk of putting themselves forward, um, have some things to bring to the party. And our, our school, your students could use that. Now to my question. If you are selected to be on the board, some difficult choices will have to be made during your term, including decisions about seeking voter approval for taxes for buildings and operations. The code of, the code of ethics adopted by this board contains the following statement. "I will express my personal opinions, but once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority," unquote. Do you prom, do you promise to support and abide by that part of the code of ethics regarding accepting the will of the majority and working for its implementation?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, board, before I administer the closing question? No, okay. So your last question, Ms. Morgan. What do you like best about our Winton Woods City School District?
I would say the caring teachers, um, just being there the four years. I, I saw that they really cared, the, the counselors. The other thing I liked was the, and I, I know it's small, but it's a big thing, you know, the announcements that they send, uh, over your telephone when something's going on. You just never was in the dark. I liked that. You know, you always knew what was going on. You didn't have to guess. If there was something that happened within that second, you would know probably within the next half hour, it, the announcement would be sent to you, so that. Keeping everyone informed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You may have a seat anywhere in the room. And Ms. O'Connor, we're on number four. Thank you.
Number four is Ariel Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name for us.
Ariel Johnson.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
All right, Ms. Johnson, uh, I'm gonna have your first question. In a minute or less, can you tell us why you want to be on the Winton Woods City School Board?
Definitely, that's a good question. Um, I grew up here. This is my home. Um, I think it's in dire need of young professionals. It, it, it suffers from brain drain. Um, and I think it's very important that us that excelled and we, we grasped the Winton Woods experience for what it was to come back and deliver that message to the students and the community as well.
Thank you. In one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board in Ohio?
That's a good question. I would definitely say the main duty is to make sure every student has the opportunity to excel, um, and reach their highest potential. Every learner, that is, like in this, in the district, not even every student, every teacher, every community member, every parent, they have the ability to learn the system and learn the dis, learn what the district is about. Um, I think it's the board's job to communicate that to everybody.
Mrs. Burns?
Could you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
Oh, sure. In one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of any local school board here in Ohio?
Okay. Um, I think that's, one of the, a second responsibility is making sure that the community is progressive as opposed to stagnant. Um, making sure that those who graduate are, they feel the, the desire to come back and contribute to the community. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
All right. So as a board mem, as one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by a majority vote of the board. So tell us what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring?
I think it's, it's about working as a team, working with the superintendent, the treasurer, and delivering the, the long-term result of what a particular, um, policy could result in. Um, a lot of people, they like to think of the immediate results and the immediate effects of certain things. And I think when it comes to thinking about an entire community and how that, this district affects that, you have to be able to look into the future. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Pennekev?
At the, um, your remarks, uh, earlier at the Forest Park Democratic Club.
Yes.
Um, you said something to the effect that the spirit needs to be revived. What, do you need to be on the board to do that?
Oh, no. No, but I think it's important to set standards at the board level. Um,
So what would you do as a board member, one of five? What would you do to convince the four of us to work on some project that you would guarantee to improve the spirit, as you put it?
Oh, absolutely. Um, I wouldn't take a backseat to it. Um, if I'm passionate about it, I believe that I would get on your nerves enough to, to let you know how important it is to me. I think that's something that we need to do. Um, me personally, I didn't know who the board members were when I was, until I became a superintendent scholar. I didn't meet anybody. I think being more visible, um, I've been told that it's more of a hands-off position. It's not two hands-on, but, you know, um, as a parent, maybe that would urge me to understand your policies better or to agree with them more if I understood where you were coming from as a board member. So being more visible and, and pushing what I believe in.
Okay. While, while you were away at Miami, working on your biology degree, we started a new program that you've probably heard of. So I'll, that was while you were gone. I'll ask you about a program that was here while you were here. What is your opinion of Project Success?
Project Success? I don't quite remember Project Success in its detail. Um, are you talking of like the students who may fall behind and is that?
I'm talking about the program that, uh, is at the Green Hills Community Building that Mr. Day and others have had.
Um, it's, it's interesting. My older sister, she actually went through that, through that program. Um, I wasn't familiar with it. Um, but I think it's, I think it's awesome that we give students a second chance, that we, that we pay particular attention to their individual needs, um, that they may not get in a classroom of, of twenty-five students. Um, she was able to actually graduate high school. It wasn't on time, but she was actually able to graduate due to that program. And I just, I think it's a good program.
And one question that's probably not appropriate to put to the other eight competitors, but if you were starting your, let's see, you graduated five years ago.
Yes.
If you were starting over here, would, would you sign up for the, um, Academy of Global Studies?
Absolutely.
Why?
It, it's so many opportunities, like being able to-
What do you think you would be able to do at Miami that you were not able to do back in two thousand and ten?
Let's see. I think I would have the, more of a drive to, to be more active at Miami. Um, the transition from being a, from being a student at Winton Woods to going to Miami, I, I'd, I had my own struggles. And I think that AGS, it, it kind of sets you up for what to expect in the college, um, environment. Um, so I, I think I would have been more hands-on, more, um, able to grasp the Miami experience if I would have had that available to me.
Okay. I've got one more, but I'll wait.
I'm gonna go ahead if that's okay. So you are also a candidate for the two vacant or open seats coming this November. Did you attend the board candidate workshop facilitated by OSBA this summer?
No.
Okay.
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Dr. Johnson or Madam Vice President, do you have anything further before-
Yes.
-the closing? Okay.
What are your innate gifts or talents that you would bring to this board?
One of the things that I, I value about myself is that I'm not afraid to speak up for what I believe in. Um, I may be young, but I've never been the one to take the backseat and to just listen or just sit back and, and hope things will change. That's not who I am as a person. Um, so definitely being a voice on the board as opposed to just being someone sitting there.
Dr. Johnson?
I didn't read this yet, I'm losing track of myself. I have a question I want to ask everybody, so I'm gonna make sure I didn't already read this. It's like I'm losing track of myself. Um, uh, there is a solid match between the interest, skills, and preferences of an individual board member that connects them to the collective stakeholders. How would you fulfill the role of a Winton Woods City School Board Member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership? Just to name a few.
Um, I would say become more involved in the community. Um, joining more committees, joining more groups that are geared toward building a collective district. Um, could you repeat the question, I'm sorry?
It's kind of long. I mean, the first part is just kind of intro and then the question. Um, yeah, so I'll just ask the question again instead of the intro. Okay. How will you fulfill the role of a Winton Woods City School Board Member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role of a board member? Which could be community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, uh, district leadership, which is part of our charter, you know, so, yeah.
Um, I feel like I've, I've established myself as a leader, um, while at Winton Woods, while at Miami. Um, also, I would grab some of the experience that I've had as a student here and apply that, um, to what's needed and, and what's going on. Um, there are so many great things happening after attending the State of the Schools. You know, it's like, oh my gosh, you get so excited and you want to contribute to that and contribute new ideas. Um, and I think I relate to the students in a way that I understand their needs. Um, having recently graduated from Miami University, it's a very competitive school, very competitive, globally competitive. We have, you know, people from China, from all around the world. And I think that's a perspective that some students who come from blue collar families or, you know, come from the inner city, they don't, that's not put into perspective for them. At the end of the day, when you graduate, you, you're a person, but to a university or to an employer, you, you have your resume. And I think that's something that a lot of students don't understand. You know, they, they want to graduate. But that's not, that's not the, the, that's, that shouldn't be the sole goal of our students. It should, you know, I should want to be the president of this, this club or, you know, the vice president. It, it should be way more than that. And I think every student deserves that opportunity to have that image communicated to them, not just sat, not just different things sat in front of them for the top, the top students to, to try to grasp something that's available to everybody.
Thank you.
Your last question is, what do you like best about the Winton Woods City School District?
It's, it's disheartening to, to have been through the district and come back and see so many people not believe in it. Um, but then again, like, being more involved as of recently and, and going to events such as the State of the Schools and, and hearing so many people see this as an area of opportunity as opposed to a, a burning ship. Like, um, it's, 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 there's still spirit. And that's one of the things that I would like to communicate to, to the community members. They don't believe that spirit is still, that there are still people working hard on the behalf of the students. And I think that's, you know, I, I, the, the teachers I've had, the, the staff that I've encountered, you know, there's, they love what they do. And it's, it's, it's inspiring. And I think once the community understands and it's, you know, at this point, I think it needs to be shoved in their face, you know, this is going on in our community. This is going on, these are the great things that are happening. And I think once that's communicated, that spirit will, it will, it will go back to what I remember Winton Woods as. Um, and it will even supersede that. It will, uh, it, it's just a, a vision that, that, it's, it's, it's possible. And that's one of the things that, that I like about Winton Woods, is that there's still people here who, who believe that.
Thank you. We appreciate your time this evening. You may have a seat anywhere in the room. And Ms. O'Connor, we're ready for number five. We are on number five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Number five is Tina. Prenticeto.
Yeah, I'm eating a lot of it, that's why. Chocolate bread.
No. There was no meeting. We could not meet. Would we have liked to?
Good evening. Would you please state your name?
My name's Tina Prenticeto.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Hi, Mrs. Prenticeto. I have your first question. In one minute or less, tell us why you want to be on the Witten Woods City School Board?
Well, I'm very invested in Witten Woods School District. I've always been. I'm a lifelong resident of the district, graduate of the district. My children have attended Witten Woods Schools their whole school career, since primary school. I have my business in the district, so I'm very invested in seeing Witten Woods thrive and be successful. And I also have a, I'm very passionate about working with children. I have a dance school, so I like to see children succeed and I want to be a part of the success of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. In one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board here in the state of Ohio?
There are many responsibilities. I would say that one of the main responsibilities is representing all the constituents, being a voice for the students, the parents, the community members, everyone in the district. Another important responsibility is seeing that all children are able to rise to their full potential, that all children are given the opportunities to truly show what they can do, that all children have adequate support, that they have a great education, that they have opportunities available. And another responsibility is to see that there is outreach to the community, which I think has really been a, I've seen a lot of that recently that I think has been a really great move for the district. I've seen things like with the community engagement coordinator, that new role. I think that's a great way to reach out to the community as well as, actually just a few days ago, I saw an email going out with all the events coming up for the high school and I think reaching out to the community is another responsibility and I'd like to continue in that vein.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
As one of five board members, you would have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board. Tell us what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring?
Well, I think one thing that I would do is make available all the resources that I have. Because I have children in the district, I know what goes on in the classroom. I have relationships with teachers, with administrators. So bringing that knowledge and sharing whatever knowledge I have with my fellow board members. I think as a board, you need to work together. You need to be a team. You need to share resources, share knowledge, so that you can make informed decisions. Also possibly reaching out to the community. I have a lot of businesses that I could possibly have a voice in being more involved in the district and that could help in terms of not only furthering district goals, but also informing the board of how, outside of the actual students, how the community members are feeling, business owners, residents, and so forth. And basically just being a voice and sharing that with the other board members.
Thank you. Mr. Penneka?
Four years ago, the community, there was a large committee formed to set a, a vision out for the district, a ten-year-out vision. And that vision was adopted by the board and is, and is operative today. And one of the, one of the concepts in that was that we would make ourselves a school district of choice and be able to attract students from all over the state of Ohio. One of those, the premise of that was that we would have state-of-the-art physical facilities. You've been here during that time and since, so tell us what you have done to support that vision of state-of-the-art facilities for our students?
Well, I've served on various committees that have to do with all kinds of aspects of the district, including state-of-the-art facilities, student achievement. I've done the student achievement committee, the curriculum committee. Also, just personally, I've tried to help the music department with various, actually things that were lacking, so that they could put on productions. Now, as far as state-of-the-art facilities, I've been trying to be a voice for seeing that the facilities that we do have, because there's no doubt we need new facilities, that the facilities we do have incorporate the necessary components that we need for our students. Because if we want to have state-of-the-art facilities, they need to, they need to do more than just look pretty. They have to have the science labs that we need, the auditoriums that we need. We have a very strong music program. We want to keep that going by making sure that new buildings have the facilities that we need to keep our successful programs going as well in providing, as well as providing some things that we maybe are lacking in. You know, obviously, we need, a lot of our classrooms aren't equipped for proper technology. Technology is very important and I've been in a strong voice in saying our students need to be prepared with technology. They need to use, know how to use computers. That's the wave of the future and that's an important component of the new facilities, is that it's equipped fully for twenty-first century learning.
You, you mentioned along the way of being involved in the student achievement committee and the curriculum committee since the last three or four years. My question is, so what? You've been on the curriculum committee, for example. What can you point to that's different today because of your leadership on that committee?
Well, I can point to one thing in particular. I was a very strong voice in pushing for higher academic standards and raising the expectations. Our students have the ability. We need to believe in them, so they believe in themselves. And I strongly pushed for raising the GPA of the athletes when that wasn't a really popular idea. And I actually spoke here at the board about that a few years ago. You know, I think we've got great students, we've got great staff, we've got great people in the community, but we need to establish more of a pride, which I see wonderful steps in that direction. I need, think we need to continue in that vein because when the students believe in themselves and we believe in them, there's so much that can be achieved.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Question. What innate gifts or talents do you possess that you would bring to the board?
You mean personality traits of mine, rather than things I've done just my own personality? I'm an analyzer and a questioner. I like to find out things. I like to research things and then share that information. But I'm also a team player, so while I'm very outspoken and I will, will share my opinion and say if I disagree, when I'm in a group, once a group decision is made, I am fully on board with the group and I hope to see that to fruition. I believe that, I, I've always had a belief that you can either be part of the problem or part of the solution. And if you're part of a team, it's your obligation to state, I believe, if you have a differing viewpoint, but once the group makes a decision, I think it's your obligation to not be counterproductive to that decision and to move forward. So I think that's a personality trait of mine that would be, that would be helpful on the board.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have any further questions for Mrs. Prenticeto?
My last one, always. Okay. There should be a solid match between the interests, skills, and preferences of individual board members that connects them to the collective stakeholders.
Could you start over? I didn't hear the first part.
Yes, okay. This is a statement, then it goes into the question.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. There should be a solid match between the interests, skills, and preferences of the individual board members that connects them to the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of a Witten Woods City School Board Member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role of a board member? And just as some examples, community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership?
You're saying specifically? Well, I would, I always like to be involved with student achievement. So I would definitely like to be involved in that area, continuing on the student achievement committee. I would also like to take a more hands-on role in terms of actually sitting in, in classrooms and seeing how things operate from a first-point standpoint. Of course, I hear from my, my children, but I'd like to be more directly involved in that to see where, how student achievement can be further moved along. I'd like to really be involved with all the various interactions in terms of attending events, talking to the community members, talking to people in attendance, seeing people's viewpoints. I really like to hear what other people have to say. I'm, I'm a questioner. So I like to talk to people and ask what they think about things and really try to hear all the various viewpoints.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'm obligated to ask this question. Do you have anything, either in your history or current situation, about which you have not informed this board? But upon being made known, would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction for the district?
No, I am squeaky clean.
I, I had a feeling that was it. If, if you are selected to be on the school board, will you attend the three-day training seminar that will be held November ninth and eleventh in Columbus?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, as your closing question, what do you like best about the Witten Woods City School District?
Oh, gosh, it's hard to say any one thing. Like I said, I'm a lifelong, you know, member of the Witten Woods School District from birth. I've always liked the sense of community and I think we've gotten a little bit away from that in maybe the past decade or beyond, but I see it coming back to that again and I'm excited about that. I, I see it, you know, the past couple of years, I've seen it moving back towards a sense of community and pride in, in not just academics, but all the various things that are part of Witten Woods, music, sports, arts. And I'd like, I think, I'd like to continue that. I think that's what I like most about it. It feels like a community.
Thank you, Mrs. Prenticeto, for your time this evening. You may have a seat anywhere in the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please state your name?
Sean Ruggles.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Ruggles.
Good evening.
Been a long night. But in one minute or less, tell us why you want to be a member of the Witten Woods City School Board?
I've been a longstanding member of Springfield Township. My kids have grown up here. I made transplant from Rochester, New York, but have chosen Springfield Township for the better half of twen, almost twenty years. I've been involved in youth, in terms of being a soccer coach, for half that time. And I've also had children in the district, so I believe in its promise. I believe in the potential and I've got a lot of experience that I want to contribute. So that's one of the reasons why I want to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruggles, in one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board here in Ohio?
Local school board is one of the most critical elements of a community. So a lot of times, people judge where they want to live, where they want to purchase property, where generations are going to be raised by the quality of the schools. So there's three things that I believe that school boards and school board members are responsible for. First is duty of care. And so because of the fact that we are taxpayers, there's an investment in schools and so we have to make sure we're good stewards of that, so the fiscal responsibility is there. There's also the opportunity and the responsibility of educating all our children in the district. School districts don't often get, they don't choose what, who comes through their door, but they have to be prepared to educate every child equally. And the third piece is, is that they have to engage community stakeholders. And if you look at most successful districts around the entire country, they have three pillars. They have parent involvement, community involvement, and strong academic standards in, in curriculum. So I think you need a balance of all three and I believe that the school board members are responsible for making sure they have those connections to the community.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
Mr. Ruggles?
Yes.
As one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action or to make any announcements of board positions except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board? Tell us what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring?
Well, one thing that we do have an opportunity to do as boards, and I've been on the boards of regional boards before in terms of the American Red Cross, United Way, Downtown San San Incorporated, and Tourism. And one of the ways that board members do that is through effective policy. And so if we have strong strategic plans with outcomes, we can always refer back to working with the staff, working with the administration, understand if our planning and our approach is delivering the, the set goals. And so while that doesn't require the board member, and board members should never get involved in operations, the operational aspect of it, the board does have the opportunity through its setting of policy and strategic plans to set what the standard of excellence should be. And through its, through its relationship with the superintendent, then make sure those policies are administered throughout the entire district.
Thank you. Mr. Penneka?
You're on the ballot in November.
Yes.
The Ohio School Boards Association made a variety of training sessions available for candidates across the state. Did you attend any of those this fall?
No.
What is your opinion of project success here in the district?
Explain the project to me.
I'm sorry?
Let's explain the project to me.
Well, that's half the answer. It is a program for students who have gotten behind because of their choices or life choices and these are high school students who are significantly behind. There may be juniors or seniors, but have credits only, looking like a freshman. And that program has been incredibly successful in enabling those students to rescue themselves. They have to apply to get in it. It doesn't take all. It's not a truancy school. It's not a reform school. It is a second chance.
And so I'm very familiar with the concept and the application of that. I think the biggest challenge for us is that we have to look at the, the makeup of our student population. We do have a lot of innovation that's happened over the last couple of years in terms of approaches like AGS and other things that have worked to advance some of our most talented students into opportunities. However, when you start to talk about project success and you start to talk about educating the middle and the bottom, I would, as a school board member, be open and supportive. But the question is going to be then, how is it implemented in our particular district? And how effective it is among our particular set of, of students? So when you say project success, it's a very ambiguous term sometimes. A lot of people use it in different ways, but I do, I do agree in terms of educating from the middle and the bottom to make sure all children can succeed and create opportunities to succeed.
I use it only because it's the formal term and was in use when your daughter was in school and so forth. So I was counting on you to-
I understand, I understand.
Let me ask you something that I know you know about.
Yep.
AGS, the Academy of Global Studies, when the program was being considered and put in back in two thousand and eleven, you wrote extensively in opposition to it. This was taken from the website of your organization in January of two thousand and eleven.
Which organization was that? I'm sorry.
You were so concerned that you outlined eleven concerns.
Which organization were you referring to?
This was the Warrior Acad- This was the Warrior Academic Advisory Council.
And was I, was I, was I the only one on there, or was I just one of the signatures?
I'm sorry.
Was I the only person on there, or was I one of the several signatures?
It's not attributed to anyone. I'm ask, putting it to you because you were one of only five board of directors to the organization. So it stayed on the website for weeks, and I presume you supported it, unless you have a different opinion from somebody else that I might ask.
Well, you might ask. I believe that, and I haven't seen...
Well, I haven't answered my question yet.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the, the author, your organization was, was, in effect, was very literate in opposing it and, and outlined eleven concerns. Four years later, and we've had our first graduating class, and by measures, it's a raging success, have you changed your opinion? And if you have, have you updated any written communication to the members of your current organization?
I'm not affiliated as a formal board member of WAAC, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, if you look at what was...
I'm sorry, you weren't a board member then?
No, I said I'm no longer a, a board member on WAAC.
No, I, I didn't say that. I said of your current organization.
What current organization am I affiliated with?
Well, let's see, it could be Rugless for Progress.
That's my school board campaign, but that's not an organization.
There's nothing there as of this afternoon. It came up, nothing. My question is, have you updated your opinion now that the data is in and shared your opinion some way?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I'm clear for the rest of the, the board. Rugless for Progress is a political campaign designed to introduce me as a potential candidate for the board. It's not an official parent organization or anything else that you might be referring to from three or four years ago. But the primary concern around Academy for Global Studies was the fact that Wintonwood School District had over a decade decline in terms of being in continuous improvement, was effective twice, and it was in academic watch twice. And so while there was a strategy in terms of, again, looking at the upper grades and looking at our talented students and pulling them together and creating a school within a school, the basic question, I think, of the note you're talking about had to do with, well, what is the plan for the rest of the school district? We had math and English deficiencies in third and fourth grade, they were falling way below the standards, and so when we start to talk about...
I understand what your concern was then. My question is, have you changed your level of support or non-support of the academy?
I was always, I'm always been supportive of supportive educational programs, particularly those that center around 21st century learning. The, the questions that were raised was that AC, at that particular time, there was a circulation of funding and a commitment to board resources in which the community had no information about. And so the letter was used to bring about a dialogue, which I believe they were supposed to be doing, around, hey, as you design the approach for innovation, here are several characteristics or qualities or answers or questions we're looking for answers to. So my opinion is always the same, which is I'm supportive of innovative approaches. The question, the big question we had was, how do we take the best practices that are happening at the best performing area of our school district and make them pervasive so that all students can advance at the same pace?
So I'm, I'm going to circle back to that because I'm not sure I actually heard the answer. So the, the fundamental question was, based on how you felt then, how do you feel now?
How I feel now is I have not seen the results of what the AC, what, what the Academy for Global Studies graduates have seen. And so while, you know, I'm, again, I'm supportive of great, strong outcomes, if those are ingredients that are working, then we want to keep those. However, the big part was, is how do we make the learning opportunities and the best practices and the learning approaches that are happening at that level pervasive to all grade levels so that we can propel the entire district?
Dr. Johnson? Was it my turn again? I'm so busy writing. Okay, this is a question, it starts with a statement and then the question, okay? And I think you've touched on it a little bit, but there should be a solid match between the interests, skills, and preferences of an individual board member that connects them with the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of a Wintonwood City School Board Member in connection with the multiple functions associated with the role, such as the community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership, just to name a few.
Okay. So the great part about the candidates that you're talking to is we all have a relationship with the district, we all have children that go through it, we all have active community engagement and, and direct relationships with administration and some members of the board. And so where we at this particular time is when we look at the focus on academic performance and the need to progress, we're now at a point where we have significant issues in which experience is needed more so than familiarity, and we also have to make sure that we weight skills versus just passion. And so the way this would work, at least from where I sit is, is that I bring a lot of regional board experience, bring community connectivity, I've been part of large municipal boards as well as small private school Christian academies, and I've been engaged with the youth for over two decades in Springfield Township, almost two decades in Springfield Township. I've developed grants for scholarships, I've done a whole bunch of things. The community connectivity just means that we have to take the assets within the school district and open them up to the public. And so we have a very vibrant business community that's available here, we have great parent volunteers, we have bird community, community volunteers, and some of the leading models around the country and also within the region have been opening up the schools to be community centers where people can be. And so I do come into this with not only the community connections, but also the experience, and I want to contribute my skill set to being able to, you know, move the school district along and address some of the, the stra- the gaps that we have in performance.
What innate gifts or talents do you possess that you would bring to the board?
The first is community relationships and, and community planning. The second piece is a very strong experience in strategic planning and action planning. I do that as a small business consultant and have also engineered regional strategic plans to help transportation companies. The other part is, is that I do recognize that one of your board members currently sitting will not be coming back, not, he's not seeking reelection. I bring legislative relationships, and I think that that's been a very valuable component to make sure that school board remains a priority in, in Columbus, as well as bringing some of the best practices and relationships across school districts around the state. And so because of the fact that I have those relationships and I actively work on that every single day in my role as African-American Chamber President, I gladly commit to provide the focus on the school district.
Mr. Rugless, it is very clear that you are a busy man. From your resume that you submitted, it looks like you serve on over ten boards, if not more. So my question to you is, what are you willing to give up in order to be an effective board member here?
So I listed ten boards, but you'll see the dates in which I came off. So I've reduced the number of boards that I'm actively involved with, so the great part of this is that the school district can benefit from those relationships and that experience. Currently serve on three boards. I currently serve as the, as a board member of the American Red Cross, meets every quarter. Not very time, doesn't take a lot of time. I'm on a United Way board, of which I voted for funding to come to the school through some special projects, and so I'm overseeing some of those things. I'm on a board of Convention and Business Bureau. And so that's, again, a bi-monthly, six times a year, but nothing at this particular point comes at the pace of what it, it used to be several years ago. So I believe that I have enough capacity to be able to manage this very effectively.
Thank you for clarifying that. There's only a few of them in which you listed dates.
I'm sorry.
So that's a good point of clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, that's active board participation, yes.
Mr. Pinnica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to violate the rules of interviewing and, and say, a couple of minutes ago, when you talked about having the schools be a community center, you scored a point with this board member. We've been looking at Community Learning Center from the city of Cincinnati, and I would hope that future boards, board members, take ownership of that. Now, back to the standard interview dynamic. You said something at the Democratic Club, which really intrigued me, and then when I saw your flyer, intrigued me even more, and I quote a sentence from your, your flyer, your campaign flyer. You said, "I will collect and act upon parent, teacher, and community input on issues regarding some, some stuff." In your remarks, you said you had a strong interest in working with teachers. I think I quoted you about right, talking about what you wanted to do with teachers directly yourself. Give me some, give me an illustration or example of what you mean by you working with teachers?
I think one of their, they're one of the most valuable pieces of our delivery system in terms of education. Teachers are solely responsible for setting standards, they're responsible for setting the culture of what the parent engagement and student engagement looks like. But the challenges that I see is that when I do talk to teachers, they're under-resourced. They also are craving a higher level of support, and they're, they want some accountability in some of the policies that the board has already kind of decided on, that they think would be more conducive to a learning environment. And so, you know, one of the challenges is, is that I know that Superintendent Smith and the school district has experienced a high turnover. And so the question then becomes is that how can we make sure that the professional skills and capability of the incoming teachers match our greatest needs in terms of our students? And so I am a proponent of professional development, I'm also a proponent of accountability. So if we got great teachers, I want to make sure great teachers are recognized and, and awarded. If we have underperforming teachers, and I think we have to find a way to address that to make sure that the tagline here of ensuring all students achieve their greatest potential, that teacher is responsible for that. So that's, that's what I meant by that, is the fact that we have to carry that input into what we decide on, what our spending areas are going to be. But, you know, I, I still know teachers that are still investing in their own school supplies, some of it is just philanthropy, some of it is making sure that they have the tools they need to, to educate the children.
Okay, thank you. I'm obligated to ask you this.
That's fine.
Do you have anything either in your history or current situation about which you have not informed this board, but upon being made known would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction to the district?
Yes, I'm the seventeenth candidate for the President of the United States. Just, no. There's nothing, there's nothing in my background.
That's the best answer all night, in case anyone's scoring.
No, there's nothing, nothing in my background. The first piece is, is that through my economic development partnerships with the mayor of Cincinnati and the governor of Ohio, there's very careful screening of, of my background and capabilities.
And you understand why I had to ask?
Yes, absolutely.
On behalf of the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have the one question that you had asked all the other candidates, but you didn't ask him, so I want to ask this one. In 2011, a committee of stakeholders from the community developed a vision statement for the year 2010, a ten-year horizon. The board unanimously voted their statement to begin as follows, "We are committed to make Wintonwood City School District a district of choice throughout southwest Ohio families, faculty, staff, students, and businesses. This will be based on the state of, state-of-the-art school facilities. Tell me what you've done to support the vision in the past four years to support the state of the art facilities?"
So in 2009, I was part of a levy committee that actually created a ten-year, forty-two million dollar investment in schools. And the schools had actually made the commitment that it wanted to move towards excellence and particularly develop strategies and plans that would then increase the overall standing of the school. And so we went to our community, and I believe very active in that. When the new superintendent came on, we invited the superintendent to our community because we felt as if it was going to be very important for him, as well as our community, to understand what the vision for Wintonwood's was going to ultimately be. In turn, we've, we've also served as community advocates in terms of informing people as it relates to and giving them faith, that we have a very good school district that has graduated scholars in the past and just needed a little bit more time to be able to, to, to reach that potential again. But I will say this, is that in the last year, particularly when, and I'll just bring it up, when it came to the community for the levy, the biggest part, I think, that I was proponent for was the fact that school districts are in the business of education. And I worked to relay to the board and, and interested individuals that the community didn't have a palate yet for new buildings until the promises of the first levy were actually met. And so they're looking for indicators around this idea of a solid education happening. And so that was kind of what I've done. I've told people not to rule out the fact that we need 21st century facilities, but in every twenty, and I also have talked to, and also went to the outreach meeting for the Ohio Facilities Commission meeting, every new facility that we're, you're talking about has also had a new curriculum and approach for 21st learning environments. So it wasn't just the space, it wasn't just the facilities, it was also the revamping of their curriculum and approaches, and they actually built the school around the planned approach. And so I think what we were suffering from is a lack of awareness as it relates to what the specific design is for the Wintonwood's academic approach in a way that the community can get behind it. I think once, once you do that, I think you'll have stronger traction for what that then looks like. So that's what I've done, and everyone knows where I am on the issue. I'm not against buildings, I'm not, but I am for making sure that the commitments from the first investment, and I supported the first investment in schools, happens.
If I could follow that, what was originally my question, thanks for asking it. Sean, is, let me paraphrase, and then you tell me that I'm wrong or that's close to what. Your answer sort of felt like students that are not yet born, students that are the age of this young lady here in kindergarten, first, second grade, and so forth, that will be here another twelve or fifteen years, that those students, and it takes from the from a time that buildings are authorized, until you can walk in them, takes four or five years.
Maybe.
Three, four, five years, okay, a bunch of time, okay? So it feels like those students down the road can't have the facilities they need until today's students do better, or we do better, that their option, their opportunity is contingent upon yesterday's kids, the scores from 2014 or something.
Yeah, that's not what I said.
I know, I know, I put words in your mouth now.
And I don't want, I don't want those words.
Correct them, correct them.
Those words in my mouth. This is not about robbing opportunities for future schools for young children. What this is about is the fact that this school district came to the community and asked for support for an emergency levy. And in your literature, what you said was, hey, we're going to move towards excellence, right? And the community sat back and invested in that and waited. And so here's what we, here's what the challenge is for this young lady. The fact is, is that the school is under OIP, right? And that our OIP ends in 2017, right? And OIP isn't a strategic plan for the district, it's an operational agreement in terms of things that you have to do, and there's no measure in terms of student-focused measures by strategy in the plan. And so what you have is a blanket thing that says, hey, we're going to have, we need you to meet fifteen indicators out of the twenty-four, which basically me, and you happen to have an average of C, which means that at some point you have to get an A if you're coming from F to get to C. And what I'm saying is that 2017, we're running out of time. We only have three years left after, in, in the existing levy that we have, and so at any point in time, we're going to be looking at a different relationship both with our community as well as with our state. And it doesn't take five years to build the schools. You're already on the waiting list, right? All you have to do is, once you pass the levy, then you already, then you start the architectural and design process, and it's an eighteen-month to twenty-four-month build-out. So we're not, we don't have to withhold schools from our, our youth. What we do have to do is make sure that what they're fed as they walk into those schools is something that is quality, that prepares them for more opportunities to be successful later. And we also need to make sure that for those who don't go to college, we have to have a, we have to have a career track as well, right? And so at the end of the day, I've been involved in campaigns of at least three out of four of you, and my position on this has never been changed, it's been very consistent. And the only reason I'm even running as a candidate for this is because I believe I have the ability to help accelerate the pace of progress, right? And so, you know, that's what I'm here for. John, I know we've gone back and forth on it, but I think the issue is, is that we just want to make sure that we don't put a bad situation in a new building and have disgruntled people because we're going to need taxpayers, when they become taxpayers, support what we just built and designed. And so, you know, again, long-winded answer, I know I'm past my sixty seconds, but I, I will say this, is that I, I am, I am for a very strong learning environment, not an, not an academic or testing environment for these children. I'm a product of public schools, I've grown up and I went to a public college, but yet I became a regional CEO. So I, I understand it, and I think I have something to offer everyone here. I have a collaborative approach, I've got relationships, I've got planning, I've got legislative practices, and I'm happy to put that to work as a, as a resident in this district.
Thank you for the better precision than, than I suggested. Final question is, if you are selected to be on the board, will you commit to putting your own biological children of school age in the district?
Yeah, but I will repeat what I, what I had said at this, there was something that was said at this meeting. And so I guess this gets at the question of, why don't I have, what, do I have kids in the district? Just to put it there. I have a graduating, I have a... I have a graduating, I've graduated my daughter out of the district in 2012.
I'm sorry, I just asked a yes/no question.
Well, this is the answer. If Winton Woods elevates its standards to the point where my son and my daughter receive a quality education that's comparable to my best choice, then yeah, I have no reservations. Winton Woods is actually my preference in terms of where to send my children. However, with two kids, we've already put two kids in the district, and they had different experiences. My daughter graduated top superintendent, top graduate, top sixteen, and had a wonderful experience here, but we, and then my son came through primary and elementary. The challenge was, my son came home one day with a ninety-six on a book report, which I thought was great. I thought it was great, right? Until I looked at the paper. This was the paper. There's more red on this document than there is black, and the reds are errors. He came home with a ninety-six from Winton Woods Elementary. And so, as a young man, young African-American man, this cannot be his standard of excellence. This would be an F in anybody's class, and that's what we bumped up against. And so, the issue is, as parents, we have to look at that and say, is there the opportunity? Does the opportunity exist to increase the standards? And if the standards are there, and this is not a ninety-six in this school district, then I'm glad to welcome my children back. But when your superintendent came to our neighborhood and had the conversation with our parents in our neighborhood, and I think some of the candidate board members were there too, and someone who had their children in Bethany asked, well, Winton Woods provide the same quality of education that I get right now in my other school? The answer was, we're not ready yet. And so, once Winton Woods is ready, I'm ready. But I think this is the opportunity for us to advance a standard and an execution that is good. And so, if my, I would rather my son get an F so I could diagnose what's wrong, but he came home with an A, and he didn't have punctuation, he didn't have capitalization, he didn't have complete sentences, and that was a ninety-six for Winton Woods. And so, when my son graduates and he goes to a college that has a minimum twenty-five or twenty-six ACT requirement, he's behind. We can't graduate and put young men and young women in a situation where they're playing catch-up because we said that they got a quality education. And so, I'm saying is, at the end of the day, I don't, I think we have pockets of excellence in Winton Woods, this is my closing statement, we have pockets of excellence, there are great things that are coming here, I think everybody here is committed to the same thing. The issue is our standard in terms of how we get there. While we may have different opinions in terms of what is happening, we can't deny what we have. So, again, thank you for listening.
Thank you, but we have one more question.
Oh, wow. I figured I would talk you out of my time.
Closing question. What do you like best about the Winton Woods City School District?
I like the potential best. I like the fact that there is some risk-taking. I like the fact that there seems to be, there is, a commitment to make things better for all families and all students. Our challenge is, is the fact that we're going to have to accelerate the pace at which we engage the community, because we're starting to get good families with good students not choosing this as a community they want to live in and send their children in. And so, what I want to do is identify what's working. I want a specific plan in terms of how we might be able to get there with measurable outcomes, times, and roles and responsibilities. And I think that what we can do is win back some of the trust from the taxpayers, who already feel as if they remember the days in which they had a huge amount of pride around this district. I think that we have a lot of great episodes of success, but I don't think it's enough right now to be able to win our trust back. And so, I love the innovation, I love the approach, I think a lot of things are going. I would just want to see if we can get a higher standards and a level of measurement so that we can tell people where we are. I don't think anybody wants to turn this around overnight, and people need to know that it's not going to happen overnight, but they deserve an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rugless. You may have a seat anywhere in the audience. Ms. O'Connor, thank you.
That is B six, B seven. I don't think this is working.
I know.
You charged yourself okay? But I think I'll make it.
I need to tell her something.
Want to try this one? You need to tell me something. Where are you going?
When you read my question, I realized it has a typo in it.
Oh, I've seen that, but I did, I tried not to.
It should be 2020, it should be 2010.
Oh, okay. All right.
These chargers don't work for Mrs. Burns for some reason.
What a shocker.
I think it's because yours is an HP and everyone else is Dell.
I was a Dell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a second, Mr. Birdy, technical difficulties?
That's fine.
Here, I'll get it. I mean, I don't.
They're losing battery to their laptops, so as soon as we get plugged back in, we will continue.
Yeah.
Okay. Please state your name for the board.
My name is Jeff Birdy.
Dr. Johnson, take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Birdy. I have your first question, and it is, in a minute or less, tell us why you want to be a member of the Winton Woods City School Board.
I have been a resident of this school district for a little over fifty years. My children have gone to school here. I've invested a lot in here. I've been treasurer for the Committee for Educational Progress and School Issues, so I have devoted some time to issues within the school district. I believe that my experience as a CFO, as a CPA, would be beneficial and useful on a board, on a school board, and I just have a desire to serve the community in the Winton Woods School District.
All right, thank you. Question two, in one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board here in Ohio?
For a local school board, has a duty for governance and helping set the strategy and the direction of the school district. I know that we have two employees that basically report to the school district, that would be the superintendent and the CFO, and their responsibility is to run the day-to-day operations of the school district. And then, it's the school board's responsibility to hold the superintendent and the CFO, the treasurer accountable for performance measures and how well the school district performs.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
I'm going to read this question, because it's a little long. As one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions, except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board. Tell us what you'll do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal that you might bring.
I think as a school board for this school district, if we all have the same goal, which at the end of the day is to make decisions in the best interests of the students of the Winton Woods School District, that we should be able to find common ground in making those decisions, and come together and help make things better for the children in the school district.
Thank you. Since you are also a candidate on the ballot for November, did you attend the board candidate workshop facilitated by OSBA?
I was not able to attend that.
Okay. Mr. Penikoff?
Four years ago, a committee of people from the community, stakeholders from the community, developed a vision statement for ten years out, for the year 2020, and that vision was adopted. One of the statements in that vision is that we would be, become a school district of choice for students from all over the state if they could physically get themselves here. But this was based in part on having state-of-the-art physical facilities. Tell the board what you have done, if anything, to support that vision in the last four years since that vision was set up.
I said before, I am the treasurer for the Committee for Educational Progress and School Issues, and one of the functions of being treasurer of that committee tries to disseminate information to the public to help them make an informed decision on issues such as the bond levy. Obviously, it wasn't successful this, these last two, two times it came up to vote, but that is something that I would be involved with in the future, is trying to pull together community engagement and understand what can we do to get to the state-of-the-art facilities that we need in this school district, because the buildings are old, and at some point, we're going to wind up spending more money on repairs and maintenance that's going to detract from our ability to pay money for educational programs.
Okay. Tell us what your opinion is of Project Success.
Personally, I've actually had some personal experience with Project Success. My oldest son, I have two children, one is very social, gets along with everybody, just graduated recently, varsity ensemble, played three sports, honor roll, actually had perfect attendance all four years. My oldest son is the exact opposite of that. He did not learn sitting in a classroom and having someone lecture to him. That was not the way he was going to be able to achieve his high school graduation, and he wound up in Mr. Day's Project Success, and he ultimately completed his last three years' worth of credits in two years at Project Success. He is currently working full-time and taking classes at the Scarlet Oaks Vocational in the evenings right now, trying to get his certified power line technician certification. So, I do understand kids, the students of the district do not learn, everybody doesn't learn exactly the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Birdy, what are your innate gifts or talents that you bring, you would bring to the board?
I think innate gifts or talents is I'm, I consider myself to be a very reasonable person that has common sense. I don't go too far one way or the other, as far as when things are, when things are going wrong, I don't stress out too much about it. I try to understand what went wrong, how do we fix this, how do we get back on, back on track? And by the same token, when things are going really well, you have to, you have to celebrate those times, but you can't, you can't sit back on your laurels and say, okay, hey, we've reached, we've reached the goal, let's stop. We just, you know, you have to continue to move forward and find ways to progress.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
This is a question, Mr. Birdy, that is a statement and then a question. Okay, there should be a solid match between the interest, skills, and preferences of individual board members that connects them to the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of a Winton Woods City School Board member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role, such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, and district leadership?
I think being an accountant, from a finance standpoint, I'll be able to understand the issues that the school district has to deal with on a daily basis. Having been in a leadership position within some healthcare organizations, I think I understand the role of leaders in organizations like this. I've been a member of this community for over fifty years now. I graduated from Forest Park High School, my wife graduated from Green Hills High School, so we have a connection to the community already, and as a school board member, I would expand my connection with the community by, you know, attending more events within the school district, looking at ways that I can help move forward with the programs that we've got.
Thank you.
If selected to be on the board, some difficult choices will have to be made during your term, including decisions about seeking voter approval for taxes, for buildings, and for operations. The Code of Ethics adopted by this board contains the following statement. "I will express my personal opinions, but once the board has acted, will accept the will of the majority," unquote. Do you promise to support and abide by that part of the Code of Ethics regarding accepting the will of the majority and working for its implementation?
Absolutely. Having served on a corporate board for a nonprofit healthcare organization, that was one of the things that we absolutely spoke about on a regular basis, between the CEO, the COO, and me, the CFO, that we could disagree as we were determining what direction we were going to go, but once we walked out of the room, we were all on the same page as far as what the direction was and why we were doing it.
Okay. And a question I'm obligated to ask you. Do you have anything either in your history or current situation about which you have not informed this board, but upon being made known would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction to the district?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Johnson or Madam Vice President, any additional questions? As your closing question, Mr. Birdy, what do you think or what do you like best about the Winton Woods City School District?
One of the things I really like, and one of the reasons that I chose to send my kids to the Winton Woods School District, is the diversity that does exist in this school district. I mean, this is, this is the world we live in, and, you know, I think it's important that our children be exposed to different cultures. We've got, what, twenty-five different languages that are spoken at Winton Woods High School? And I think that's, you know, that's reflective of the world that we live in, and we're not, we're not just competing with Princeton, Mount Healthy, and, you know, anybody in another community near us, it's a global issue now.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. You may have a seat anywhere in the audience. Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
B seven, Katrina's B eight.
Yes, we're on number eight.
We're getting there.
Oh, number seven.
B eight.
No, eight.
Eight. You have lost track.
Don't scare me, Madam Vice President.
Yes, we're definitely on eight. I forgot we got the six, so, okay. All right. Good evening. Good question, three on here. Hello?
Good evening. Good evening. Could you please state your name? My name is Katrina Rugless.
Good evening, Mrs. Rugless.
Good evening.
I have your first question. In a minute or less, just tell us why you want to be a member of the Winton Woods City School Board.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak and be a candidate, but the main reason why is because this is my community. This is my community, and I care about children, and because I have always been a student or an educator who wants to make sure that every student can reach their highest potential. I was a student from a first-generation college background, and my parents didn't know how to help me navigate towards college. And as I look at students in my community who reflect me, they look just like me, they have some of the struggles that I had, and given the fact that I am a college administrator and have had over twenty years of experience in education, I wanted to say, I wanted to find a way to give back to my community. And with that background and understanding that students are always, they may struggle coming in, but they're at promise, and we also, we have to find a way to make sure that students can have the opportunities that they need to be able to take advantage of any opportunities that they have.
Thank you.
Question number two, in one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board here in Ohio?
One is that the school board must set policies to help the school board reach their goals that they have set for their community and for their students. The other, the other opportunities that they have or responsibilities is engagement. We have to figure out, how do we make our community connected? Because thriving school districts, they really look at, how do we look at the stakeholders and bring the stakeholders on board? For instance, we have to find a way to engage the teachers, we have to find a way to engage the community, we have to find a way to engage the- Also, the other responsibility would be fiscal responsibility. How are we taking advantage and how are we utilizing the stakeholders' resources that they are pouring into the school? We have a responsibility to make sure that we are including our parent, including our stakeholders in understanding what's going on in the school and communicating to them how their investments are being translated into positive assets for the community as well as working to reach the goals of the district.
Madam Vice President?
Ms. Rugless?
Yes.
As one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize the spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board. Tell us what you would do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve any proposal you might bring.
Well, first of all, I would have to make sure that the board understands what the reason would be behind the proposal. I would be responsible for due diligence to provide the necessary information such that they can make the best decision for the school district. And I think communication is the best, is the best way to make sure that everybody is on board. I would also, you know, we're not always going to agree on everything, but I think what we will have to do is be respectful for each other's positions and really support the fact that we are a unit and that we need to work together to try and get to, get to a, a resolution of what it is that we're trying to do or what I'm trying to propose for the, to the board. And first of all, I also have to make sure that they understand, how does what I'm proposing, how does it benefit the overall goal of what it is that we're trying to do?
Thank you. And as a follow-up to that question, if selected to be on the board, some difficult choices will have to be made during your term, including decisions about seeking voter approval for taxes for buildings and/or operations. The Code of Ethics adopted by this board contains the following statement, "I will express my personal opinions, but once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority." Do you promise to support and abide by the part of the Code of Ethics regarding accepting the will of the majority and working for its implementation?
You know, when you take an oath of office, it is your due diligence to make sure that you are abiding by what the Code of Ethics are for that board. So yes, I would, I know that I will have an opinion, but I also know that as a unit and as a group, as we are trying to work on behalf of the students in the community, we cannot be disjointed. We have to figure out a way that, over the last couple of years or 10 years, at least 10 years, it has been very divisive in this community, the us against them, the Green Hills, Springfield Township, Forest Park. We have to find a way that we can bring the communities together and the board cannot appear to be unable to work together. So that's going to be very important, that being able to follow the rules of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Penikoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In 2011, a committee of people from across the community met several times and developed a vision statement for the year 2020, sort of a 10-year-out horizon. And the board unanimously adopted that as the, the vision for the district. Among the, the vision statements, it says, "We are committed to make Wenton Woods City School District a district of choice throughout southwest Ohio for families, faculty, staff, students, and business." And that was one of the underpinnings for the open enrollment policy that you heard talked about a couple of hours ago in this room. But there was a statement in, in there about making the, the school district attractive to have state-of-the-art physical facilities. Tell the board what you have done in those four years to support bringing that vision to reality.
Okay. So what was the, can you tell me what the first part of the vision statement was?
Let me just read the whole thing again, because I was paraphrasing as I went through. Each time I looked up, I lost my place.
Okay. The first part is...
In 2011, "A committee of stakeholders from the communities developed a vision statement for the year 2020," basically a 10-year-out horizon. The board unanimously adopted that. And among other things, it says, "We're committing to make Wenton Woods City School District a district of choice throughout southwest Ohio for families, faculty, staff, students, and business. This will be based upon state-of-the-art facility, physical facilities." Tell the board what you have done in those four years to support that vision for state-of-the-art physical facilities.
Okay, for state-of-the-art physical facilities, I have to say that one of the things in order to get individuals to support that mission, you have to understand your community. I've met several times with different individuals within a community. I've met, had conversations with the superintendent about how do we get buildings, because I know that is something that the community would like to get, or the community, the parents, and the leadership would like to get. So in order to do that, we need to figure out, how do we make education a community priority? So after going on the walks to see the physical facilities of the school, I agree, yes, it is needed to, new facilities are needed within the school district. I've shared with community members that, yes, new buildings are needed. However, in those conversations with individuals, I understood that there is a need to improve the academics. So in order to do that, there were conversations about how do we get those new facilities as well as getting the academics that, that we so much wanted in the community. So we've reached out, I reached out to the administration to talk about ways that we can blend and talk about where there were gaps in the communication to the community such that the, the facilities would not be such a negative thing towards the community. So really, it was about having genuine conversations and finding out, looking at the stakeholders, what are your challenges, and coming to the leadership to say, how do we come together and blend so that we can get the facilities that we're looking for getting as well as the academics?
Okay. I understand your answer. So square this for me. Why did you write on September the ninth, 14, that you were not in support of the bond issue?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to answer that question. I wrote that because I had been asked, I had been, I had shared with the leadership that I am going to remain quiet until I get more information about how the school buildings and academics. After that, I had asked, my picture was used to support bond issues. And so I said, I'm going to make it clear to you all where I am at this point. And that's why I clarified it. So...
I understand. Thank you. Go ahead.
Dr. Johnson?
Oh, you touched on this question already, but it's a little statement and then it's a question, but you've already touched on a little bit. Just elaborate a little bit more for me. There should be a solid match between the interests, skills, and preferences of individual board members that connects them with the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of Wenton Woods, as a Wenton Woods School Board member, in connecting the multiple functions associated with the role, like community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership? You touched on some of those in some of your answers, but...
Well, you know, we really have to look at the fact that, you know, have genuine understanding of what's needed and what the community wants as well as what's needed for the children. And so the connection between the academics and the connection between, I'm sorry, what's the question? Mr. Penikoff threw me off for a second with this question.
Oh, okay. What are you doing over there, John? It's that smile. I don't know. What are you doing over there?
I was just seeking information.
Seeking information, you are. That's what we're all doing. The question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It is getting late. I'm really sorry. Okay. How will you fulfill the role of a Wenton Woods City School Board member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership, which is part of our charter?
Okay. All right, sure. Because of my experience of having a diverse background in academics and community advocacy, one of the things that I, you would have to do is find out what's working within the school, find out where there's some gaps, find out what is needed. I wouldn't come in just trying to say, okay, do these things. What I'd like to understand is what is the goals, what are the missions of the, of the current school board and as it relates to those areas? And then find out how my skill set matches with that. And I have a lot of engagement, like you said. I've raised over $16,000 for the Wenton Woods City School District students for academic initiatives. I understand that we are, the standards have increased, so find out other ways to support and bring my expertise from being an educator to that, to the school or to the board, to be able to support teachers, to be able to sort, support policies that move students forward.
Thank you.
Question, what are your innate skills or talents or gifts that you would bring to the board?
I think the biggest talent that I bring in the area for, I think where there's a gap within our community, is the ability to convene all three communities. To be able to convene stakeholders on the issue of making education an academic priority or making a community priority. I've had, over the last eight years, I have worked across the leadership in Wenton Woods, I mean, in Forest Park, Green Hills, and Springfield Township, to be able to say, it is important for us to try and move our communities forward by making education a community priority. And that is the major thing that I can bring to this community. We, you know, you know, going back to Mr. Penikoff's question is, how do, we, we had such a splintered community, as you can look at the, the results of the last vote. And we had such a splintered community on the issue of education. And I think the biggest issue was because there was a lack of communication. Not that the, the district did not do their part, but is it, was it received? Was the message received? So to be able to bring those, those communities together on, on making the goals of the board, of the school, the goals of the community, is something that I can bring to this board.
Thank you. Mr. Penikoff?
Before I get to my question, I'd like to give you an opportunity to correct or revise an answer you just made because you, either you misspoke or I misheard.
Okay.
The answer was, you have raised and given $16,000 to the Wenton Woods City School District.
Correct.
Is that your answer?
That is my answer. What, okay, let me revise that. $16,000 to the students enrolled at Cincinnati, I mean, enrolled at Wenton Woods, meaning it could be to a community partner that is servicing...
Okay, that's significantly different than giving it to the district.
Yes.
Because our records don't come close to what you've just said.
Students within the district...
Yes.
Who are being serviced by your community partners.
But money that we had loaned to you, given to you, only three-quarters of that has come back under the, tax money that we made available to your private entity, only 75% of that came back. I just wanted...
Now, let me, let me...
But you've cleared it up nicely.
Let me clear, let me clear that up for you even further.
Okay.
If you're referring to Good Catch...
I am.
Good Catch has never, we have never requested any monies from the Wenton Woods City School District. That was a partnership with the Wenton Woods City School District with your previous superintendent who said, "We need to find a way to bring the three communities together," and this was a platform to bring the, the communities together. There were no, there was no solicitation for funds for any of the schools to buy tickets in collaboration with Camille Nasby and Mr. Denny. They used it as incentives for students, to incentivize them to do well in school.
Yes, I understand. What is your opinion of Project Success?
I'm not familiar with Project Success.
Okay, let me change the question to something I know you're familiar with. What is your opinion of AGS?
Yes.
And let me set the stage for the question. Four years ago, you wrote extensively about your opposition and concerns, 11 points on this particular posting that was on your organization's website for some number of weeks or months.
Yes.
That's four years ago. Now we have the results, we have the first graduate in class, we have many of the concepts being reapplied to the rest of the non-AGS part of the high school and down into the middle school. What is your current view of AGS? And have you summarized it in writing to share with your followers?
Okay. Let me be clear. If you, since you already, since you have the 11 points...
Yeah, it's the January 2nd.
If you, if you look at that, the opposition at that time was not against AGS. It was supportive of AGS because the tenets of AGS was to raise the standards and expectations of, this program was, had higher standards, it had higher parent involvement, higher parent engagement. And the way that that program was introduced to the community, it had already been planned and, and to the parents, it had already been planned. It was brought to the community on a Thursday with, for it to go to a vote on a Monday. And so there was a meeting that had, that brought stakeholders together. And there were questions about equity among...
I'm very familiar.
Okay. There were questions about that.
What is your current view?
So the issue...
What is your current view?
My current view is that I support AGS like I did before.
Oh, when you said concern one, concern two, concern three, up to concern 11.
Concerns, Mr. Penikoff, concerns are, you know, if we can't have conversation, if we can't have dialogue to discuss concerns, then what you end up doing, you end up isolating and creating an environment that is not inclusive and open to other opinions. Now, AGS, the tenets of AGS with higher expectations, having parental involvement, community involvement, is an excellent idea. The biggest issue, the biggest concern, was how do we scale it up? How do we make it a district-wide initiative and have higher expectations so you don't leave students behind? If you look at the... Now, AGS, the tenants of AGS with higher expectations, having parental involvement, community involvement is an excellent idea. The biggest issue, the biggest concern was how do we scale it up? How do we make it a district-wide initiative and have higher expectations so you don't leave students behind? If you look at the report card, you will see that we are leaving students behind. And the, and so, to Mr. Smith's credit, by scaling it across the district, that is a good thing. That is an excellent thing, and I support it.
And Sue. Thank you. Go ahead.
Dr. Johnson or Madam Vice President?
I was trying to remember. I have taken so many notes. I don't know where I went. I'm sorry.
Any further questions?
So maybe the only, I'll steal your question. If you're selected by this board to join them, would you promise to enroll your biological school students in this district?
I don't know if I will do that because my son has specific-
I understand.
My son and my children, I would have to look at what it is and what level the students are coming through. Let me tell you, back in 2013, I held a community forum in my neighborhood, and all the candidates came out along with Mr. Smith. And the question from the audience were, should I remove my child from the location of where they are and put them in Winton Woods City School District? And at that time, the answer was no. You should not. And so, I don't fault any parent that looks at their child and said, "I want to make sure that you have what it is that you need." And if the school district can provide it, he will be here. But if I find that the school district is not ready to meet his needs, he will not be here.
Okay, understand.
Earlier, you mentioned that Good Catch, your organization didn't directly solicit monies from the six or seven of our buildings. If you hadn't solicited monies from district families and the district itself, would it be fair to say you wouldn't have raised as much money as you did in order to only provide three quarters back to the district, if that?
The first year was a true partnership. The first year was in partnership with Mr. Steve Denny, who was at the table, as well as Camille Nasby. I did not ask them to purchase tickets. It was their thing to try and figure out, how do we bring the communities together? Whatever happened on their end is what they did. We have built partnerships. The last year that we, we partnered with Winton Woods, we raised more money from the partners and the sponsors than we raised from anything that has to do with Winton Woods. Winton Woods did not provide, did not purchase at the level that they did the first year. So, the building of the partnerships and getting Forest Park, Business, Chamber of Commerce, some of the local businesses around in Springfield Township, Green Hills, and those partnerships are the thing, are the individuals and the groups that generated most of the money for Good Catch the last year that we worked with Winton Woods.
Thank you. Any further questions before I facilitate the last question? Okay, so last question, Mrs. Rugless. What do you like best?
One second.
Yes.
There's a question on here about the registration of the nonprofit from 2012 to 2013. According to the Secretary of State, you claim nonprofit organization wasn't registered until November 2013. In twenty, what year was the first year you worked with Winton Woods, where it was a partnership?
The first year was 2012, and it was not a nonprofit at that time. It grew, and because it grew and it was successful, then it became a nonprofit arm of the community partnership for collective achievement.
Okay. Thank you.
It started out as an initiative, as a community initiative.
Any further follow-up to that, Dr. Johnson?
No, that's good.
Okay, so last question, Mrs. Rugless. What do you like best about the Winton Woods City School District?
What do I like best about Winton Woods City School District is the potential for it to be the anchor for making our communities thrive, helping our communities thrive. The potential for students to, you know, there, it's a, it's a storybook ending. I have, I see a storybook ending for Winton Woods. It started out as a pillar of excellence. It hit a rough spot, and it is not currently, if you look at the data, there are some improvements, but over the last ten years, for whatever reason, it did not, it has not been serving our students well academically, the entire student body. Winton Woods has the potential to become that phoenix, to have, that it can be an institution, it can be an example of reform. And there are so many opportunities that the Winton Woods City School District can do to add value to our community. You know, we've talked about, I've talked to leadership about, we want to have, make our communities to be able to see, to see what the district has to offer. And I think if we just find a way to connect our communities, our stakeholders with what Winton Woods has to offer, the arts, the music, and then get the academics where it needs to be, we're, we're going to move forward in a very incredible way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may have a seat anywhere in the audience. And Miss O'Connor, would you please bring in our last applicant? Thank you.
It's not easy. I'm sorry. It'll be right soon. She said it's broke, but it's going to be right. It'll still be here when it's-
You said the same thing at the same exact time.
It's gonna be right.
Oh, yeah.
It's interesting.
Vice President? Is that the glow?
Uh, uh. No, no, it's not. But, it's the reality. I'm applying.
Oh, I know, you did too.
And they don't sell you anything.
Oh, no, I know. Open for peanuts, nothing.
Good evening. Would you please state your name?
My name is Paula Kuhn.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Take it away.
You can lower that a little bit.
Oh, thank you.
Evening, Ms. Kuhn. You are the last candidate crossed.
Oh, there's a couple more people. No, there weren't. There's no-
Don't fear me. Okay, I've got your first question. In one minute or less, tell us why you want to be a member of the Winton Woods City School Board.
As far as growing up in this community and receiving my education here, the public education is the foundation for my success and for what I've achieved in my life. It's been the success for my children. So I'm extremely strong supporter of public education. And then even more importantly, my heart belongs here at Winton Woods. It's my, my home school. It's where my children went to school. So not only is my passion in public education, but my heart and my soul are here.
Thank you. In one minute or less, tell us what you think are the top two to three responsibilities of a local school board here in Ohio?
As far as a school board, it's comprised of five individuals that each bring their own skills and talents that work and blend together as one. And the main goal is to provide the best education for our district's children. And as a group, also to ensure that they provide the highest, not the highest level of education, but also ensuring good stewardship of the public's money, to be a good liaison into the community so that they understand what goes on in our public schools, and to create an ongoing, successful environment that will benefit our community.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
As one of five board members, you have no authority to supervise any of the staff, to authorize spending of money, to commit the board to any action, or to make any announcements of board positions except as a result of actions taken in public meetings by majority vote of the board. Tell us what you'll do to persuade your fellow board members to vote to approve a proposal that you might bring.
It depends. As, as the board gets to know each other, we probably know how we think. We probably know people that may share a common view. We might know why our board members may not support a certain view. And the trick, the trick to me, or if you want to call it a trick, but the art to negotiate is to find the commonality bond between each person. And if all people are working together for the utmost benefit of the students, even if it doesn't work out exactly the way that I might have envisioned, I think collectively the group can come up with something that's productive and that accomplishes the same goal. So by working collaboratively and cooperatively with each other, and you can still be passionate and share your ideas and visions, that's the best way to accomplish, how I would accomplish this goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Penicoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're one of six candidates on the November ballot, is that correct? Have you taken advantage of the Board Candidate Workshop that the Ohio School Board Association makes available across Ohio for candidates? Have you?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I attended the workshop for the school board candidates that was held up in Miami'sburg. And I think it was the same night as the district stayed at the school, so unfortunately I was unable to attend that as I was, had the commitment.
Yes, okay. In 2011, a committee of stakeholders from across the communities developed a vision statement for the year 2020, sort of a ten-year outlook. And the board unanimously adopted that as its vision. And among the planks in that vision statement, it says, "We're committed to making the school district a district of choice. And this will be based upon, in part, state-of-the-art physical facilities." So tell us what you have done to support that element of the vision in the four years since it was created?
As far as the state of the art of the buildings themselves, one of the, the struggles, I think, right now, even though when it was put in place with the buildings being equal, you know, the school buildings being the grade-level buildings, one of the challenges we have right now is transitioning our students from one building to the next. I think the importance of being able to, right now, while we don't have one single school building for the pre-K through sixth grade, which I think may accomplish some of the goals for academics and for parental involvement, and for feeling like you have a home to your school and having ownership, which I think are key critical points to academic success. During that time, I have worked to try to mend those bonds through different parent groups and to come up with different ways to overcome those while we do have that physical barrier right now.
Well, I can, since you're the last interview, I can confess this. I put this question to everyone, and it's not, it didn't come out as the question I had in mind. My real question to all of you folks was, did you support the bond issue? Why or why not?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. I repeated it to some, and it was, I'm sorry that it was too long a question, yeah.
Okay. Dr. Johnson?
Okay. You've tipped on some of this, but I'm gonna ask this question again. It's like a statement, and then the question comes. There should be a solid match between the interests, skills, and preferences of individual board members that connects them to the collective stakeholders. How will you fulfill the role of a Winton Woods City School Board member in connection to the multiple functions associated with the role such as community engagement, financial advisory, student achievement, district leadership, which is part of our charter? Just a minute.
Well, a lot of these duties I comment, I do right now as far as in, in some of my obligations as the Winton Woods Educational Foundation President. I build connections into the community through partnerships to raise money and awareness of the foundation's goals. I have currently still president of the Performing Arts Boosters, so I'm reaching out into the community as far as our parent, and I still do that even today, even though my son graduated last year. I still am involved in different civic programs in different organizations, and I attend the different community, or the different school functions, what I think will be a key point as being a school board member, to show support of the staff and to support our students in all of their programs. So that I think that would be a key component of my duties.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Vice President?
What innate gifts or talents do you bring, or would you bring to the board?
A couple comes to mind. Tenacity, energy, enthusiasm, and a love to solve problems. I'm not a complainer in the sense that I can identify problems, but I look for ways that we can connect and grow and build. I tend to like to strengthen rather than tear down. And those, I think, are real important qualities when you're trying to do something positive. And I think those are intangibles, but they come through in my success in my life and how I conduct myself day to day.
Thank you. Mr. Penicoff?
What is your opinion of Project Success?
I'm very pleased that we have the opportunity to help our children that maybe don't fit in traditionally with traditional classrooms that have another avenue to be able to accomplish a high school degree. Not, all students are unique and different, so it's nice to be able to modify and create a program that fits the needs of our children. And we're not so rigid that the children have to comply with the learning. The learning can be adopted and worked around with the needs of the child. And I think the Project Success has been wonderful in a lot of different areas. It's met children's needs for a variety of, I mean, as many children that go there, I think they have as many reasons why it exists.
So what's your opinion of the Academy of Global Studies?
I'd like, the Academy of Global Studies was very exciting to me as a freshman. When my son entered into this, his high school career, he was one of the first, he was the first class for the AGS. And the thought that there was an extended, or extended bell, the fact that there was requirement for community service, the fact that it, what I liked is that it combined social studies and English, and it married those two topics together so that you could, you could jointly teach and have that opportunity to share and expand the opportunities. When you're learning American history, you would read about American history or American writers. I think they, they piggyback very well with each other. I think, and on the other side is, I think we need to push our students even further. I think there should be a higher track on AGS, a little bit quicker in the science mode, a little bit earlier in freshman year, maybe having the opportunity to do biology their freshman year, so that you can go into higher-level math or science classes. That would be my suggestion. And then one other thing with the global seminar, I would make it even meatier. I would probably tie in the economics of the world, maybe look at world finances, maybe incorporate that in currency, just make it something relevant that the students can see. But it's, it's a great opportunity. It taught just incredible wealth of, of public speaking. It increased their knowledge of the world, their ability to work together as students together in a common goal or a common program. So overall, and plus it sets our district apart, it makes us unique. And I like being unique, and I like being, having us stand above everyone else.
I'm at the athletic field, high school athletic field quite often to chat with folks and maybe even watch the games. Every time I'm there, I see you or other members of your family making hot dogs, selling hot dogs, or organizing-
And also, it's fun, actually. It's enjoyable work. It's a way to give back. I think my husband feels the same way, even though I make him grill quite a bit, but...
All right, I'm obligated to ask you this. Do you have anything, either in your history or current situation, about which you have not informed this board, but upon being made known, would cause embarrassment to the board or be a distraction to the district?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Johnson or Madam Vice President, anything further? Mr. Penneka, anything further?
Did we ask this question about the ethics?
I was debating whether or not to ask you the closing question because I feel like you've already answered it, but to be fair, I've asked it to all the other eight folks. So, in closing, what do you like best about Wynton Woods School District? Maybe something other than what you've already said.
Yeah, well, to tell you the truth, I like the diversity. I like the exchange of ideas, and you have socioeconomic varieties, you have ethnicity, you have students from around the world. And I also like the fact that our students blend very harm, they're very accepting of one another. They get along very well. That's something that you don't see at many high schools where there's a lot of cliques, or there are certain, if you're only a band person, you only do, talk to band people. If you're athlete, you only like athletes. They do tend to blend, and they do tend to cross over, and you do different disciplines, and you have a wide variety of experiences. My son actually lettered in five sports. He was on varsity ensemble. He sang at the Overture Awards. He takes private lessons at our high school with Lincoln Chapman, who's an extraordinarily well, you know, talented vocal instructor. He had lots of opportunities that private schools don't offer, and we have this in our own backyard, ready for our students to all take advantage of. He took AP Calculus as a junior year, and in his senior year, he took BC Calculus. We have one of the, we have some of the finest teachers in our district. I'm very excited about having that expand and be an advocate for every child, because every child has this opportunity. And however they choose to take advantage of it, that's my desire to give them all those chances.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You may have a seat anywhere in the audience. Board, at this time, a motion would be in order to move into executive session.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the matter involving employment appointment and the conditions of employment. Board, it matters.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'd like to just announce to the crowd once again that we will go into executive session to deliberate regarding the appointment. We will have business to conduct after we come back from executive session, so you're more than welcome to wait here in this room.
Do you have to do the roll?
Mm-hmm, please call the roll, Ms. O'Connor.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
And Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into executive session. I now call this regular meeting back to order. Ms. O'Connor, would you please call the roll? O'Connor?
Yeah.
It's after midnight, bear with me.
Mrs. Burns?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Penneka?
Here.
And Mrs. Miranda?
Present. In a matter of the board vacant seat, board a motion would be in order.
Madam President, regarding the vacancy that exists on the Board of Education of the Wynton Woods City School District, I move to appoint Mr. Jeff Birdy to fulfill the position effective immediately for a term ending December 31, 2017. I further move that the treasurer is hereby directed to provide written notice to Hamilton County Board of Elections that the vacancy has been filled and supply the name of the person appointed.
I will second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, I just want to make sure that everyone recognizes by the hour that this was a tough decision, and a lot of conversation went into this. We did not take this lightly. We appreciate the fact that all of you actually stayed until tomorrow, but we also encourage those who were not chosen to please continue to work to support the district. There's still an election coming up in November, and we wish you all good luck.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to-
Well said.
Yeah, it was very well said. We really thrashed this out. It was not an easy decision, and you all really brought it, and it made it hard for us to decide, really hard for us to decide.
Anything from you? Okay. Mr. Birdy, would you please come forward so that I can, oh, I'm sorry. Please call the vote again. It's after midnight.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
And Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Birdy, if you would, please come forward so I can administer the oath of office.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
That I will perform faithfully-
That I will perform faithfully-
The duties of member of Board of Education of the Wynton Woods City School District-
The duties of member of Board of Education of the Wynton Woods School District-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
Hamilton County, Ohio-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
And in accordance with the laws-
And in accordance with the laws-
In effect and hereinafter to be enacted-
In effect and hereinafter to be enacted-
During my continuance in said office-
During my continuance in said office-
And until my successor is elected and qualified-
And until my successor is elected and qualified-
So help me God-
So help me God.
Sworn to and subscribed before me this 28th day, September 2015. Congratulations, Mr. Birdy. You may have a seat.
There'll be a test tomorrow. All right.
Okay. We will now move into item number 10, which is comments from the Board of Education. Madam Vice President, do you have any comments?
No, I think I've done with comments for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Penneka, any comments from you?
Not tonight, thank you.
Dr. Johnson, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
I do have one. So if you would bear with me, I know we've been here quite some time, but by the next time we're at our regular meeting in October, Hispanic Heritage Month will be over. So I wanted to wish a very happy Hispanic Heritage Month and acknowledge that for all of our district families, since our district does, as all of you know, serve so many Hispanic and Latino families. For those of you who don't know, Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15 to October 15. So this is a wonderful time for us to celebrate this, and I'm very happy to see that Principal Jones at Primary North is doing a celebration here in a little week or two. So I look forward to going to that. So now to switch gears. Mr. Birdy, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're now the fifth member of the Board of Education, so congratulations to you. I don't think there's any associations here this evening, or this morning.
I don't have any comments, Madam President.
Thank you.
You have comments?
All right. 12:09, this meeting is now adjourned.